Thank you for coming out tonight to Nibley City Council, uh, City Council meeting. And before we actually call the meeting to order, I would like to ask Garrett Mansell to give us some opening ceremonies if you're interested.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So hopefully going to get better at this because I'm, I'm still kind of new, but as I was contemplating and, and different things, you know, as you know, today uh, is the eightieth anniversary of Normandy D-Day. And uh, I think it's appropriate that we recognize uh, those who have sacrificed to give so many of us our freedom. And in that I love, uh, I have a series of books I read on Navy SEALs. Cause they fascinate me on the things they're able to do and uh, the mindsets and and the character that they possess. And uh, in one of my favorite books, I've read Ernest Shackleton and the Endurance, if any of you know that. Uh, I wanted to share a quote from him that I think ties into um, what we all want, uh, the type of attitude that those who have sacrificed have. And something that we all need to adopt in order to continue to, to move forward. So Ernest Shackleton, as you know, the renowned explorer once wisely said, difficulties are just things to overcome after all. This powerful quote encapsulates the essence of a resilient, determined attitude towards life challenges. Shackleton's words remind us that despite the obstacles we may encounter, there is nothing more than, they are nothing more than opportunities for growth and personal development. Difficulties are not insurmountable burdens, but rather stepping stones toward achieving our goals and aspirations. Just like seasoned mountain climbers who embrace the hurdles on their path. We too can grow stronger, more resilient and reach new heights by facing adversity head on. As we focus on what lies within our control, our thoughts, our behavior and our attitude. Difficulties become empowering challenges that shape us into more resilient individuals. So the next time we have a problem, remember Ernest Shackleton's difficulties are just things to overcome after all. And with that, I would like to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Garrett, thank you very much. Very appropriate. And uh, we do owe a lot to a few. Thanks for that. Uh, with that, we'll call the city council meeting to order. I'm very excited that you all have come out to hear us go through the first reading of our 2024-25 budget. And I, uh, Amy Johnson is here, our city treasurer, and she will have you spellbound, I promise, as we talk about this year's budget. Uh, council, I ask you to consider, uh, let's do a roll call, please. Okay. Will you start, please?
Kay Sweeten.
Garrett Mansell.
Aaron Mann.
Larson.
Norman Larson.
Jacobson. And if you're in front of a mic, please.
Justin Maughn.
Cheryl Bodley.
City staff, we have Chad Wright, Recreation Director in the back. We have Amy Johnson, City Treasurer. We have Steve Elison, uh, Public Works Director. And big, uh, Talon Bigelow, who is going to be part of our agenda. So we'll, uh, who's on the office staff and we'll look forward to hearing from you. Uh, with that council, if you would consider approval of minutes from May 23rd, 2024 and the agenda that's been proposed for you.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 23rd, 2024 minutes and the current agenda.
Thank you, Kay. So we have a motion to approve, second from Nathan. Discussion on the motion, please. Any objection to voting? Saying none, those in favor, please say.
Yes, it does.
So clarification of the motion for the council is that also includes the executive session, uh, minutes from our last meeting. Any question on that? Those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, we have a public comment period. This is a chance for the citizens of Nibley or anyone outside of Nibley to stand up and address the council on any topic that you would like the council to hear. If it's a public hearing on our agenda, it might be more appropriate for a comment related to that to come later when it's germane to the agenda. Nevertheless, if you'd have something that you would like to tell us, we are eager to hear it. With that, I'll open the public comment period. Is there anyone signed up? Oh, it's right here. Okay. No one signed. Without objection, I'll close the public comment period and look forward to publicly comment at another time. Uh, moving right along, uh, we have a planning commission report, please, Levi.
We, we actually.
Okay.
The meeting was canceled.
All right. Well, good. Well, not good, but thanks for that report. So with that, let's bring, uh, uh, Talon Bigelow up and let's take up an agenda item regarding Nibley Citizen of the Year. Talon led the charge this year, did a great job of organizing the process that brought us to this point. And so the council appreciates your efforts there. And maybe you can tell us how, how we got to this point.
Yes. So in years past, uh, we have a Nibley Citizen of the Year selected. Um, and generally that person is selected by the mayor. And um, Mayor Jacobson came up with an idea that um, this Nibley citizen should come from, the nomination should come from the citizen rate here. And so um, we put out on Facebook, on Instagram, we handed out flyers. I know some employees seem probably couple flyers on our desk here and there. Um, we really tried to get out as much as we could, um, notice asking the board nominations. And this year we received 13 nominations from uh, people here in Nibley City. And with those nominations, we had a committee formed. Um, I reached out to different uh, people of different backgrounds and the commercial businesses here in Nibley, from the education sector. Um, we had people from couple courts. We just had this group. Our selection committee come together and go over for an hour or two each nomination that's provided. And um, the focus um, was to find somebody this year that um, had a spirit about them of volunteerism, uh, sure there's a kindness and dedication, not just to Nibley City, but to Cache County and, and this region in the United States. Um, so it was really neat to see the selection committee come together. Cheryl and I had the privilege of meeting with them a couple of weeks ago and hearing those words. And after a hour or two of deliberation, um, the committee came forward with a name and we wanted to present um, Mrs. Joan Rigby as our 2024 Nibley Citizen of the Year.
Excellent.
Can you come up, Mrs. Rigby, please, and stand for us at the podium? Thank you. In general, we don't read resolutions word for word out loud, but this is a very special occasion and we want to make sure that we honor you as appropriate. And so with your permission, I would like to read a resolution that will be proposed to the council regarding you being the Citizen of the Year. Thank you. Whereas annually, Nibley City recognizes a citizen that has made a positive and lasting imprint on our community. And whereas an award selection committee made up of neighbors and local business leaders selected amongst 13 citizen-provided nominations for this 2024 award. And whereas Joan Rigby was selected by the Nibley City 2024, or selected as the Nibley City 2024 Citizen of the Year. And whereas Joan Ray Burtz Rigby was born in 1933 and was married to Gordon Alvin Rigby on the 22nd of June, 1955 in the Idaho Falls Temple of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. And whereas Joan and Gordon moved to Nibley approximately 20 years ago with their five boys. And whereas Joan Rigby has taught many Cache Valley residents the art of dance and encouraged young minds to read and learn. And whereas Joan Rigby has been chosen for her example of volunteerism, kindness and work ethic. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Nibley City, State of Utah, that the Nibley City Council formally congratulates and recognizes Joan Rigby for her lifelong dedication to service kindness and wholesome recreation. And the city council names Joan Rigby as Nibley's 2024 Citizen of the Year. Thank you. So before we get carried away, we've built up an expectation, but it's not official until the city council agrees with it. So with that council, I'd ask you to consider Resolution 24-13 as read.
Mayor, I'd like to approve Resolution 23, 2413, a revolution recognizing Joan Rigby as Nibley Citizen, Nibley City's 2024 Citizen of the Year for a spirit of volunteerism, kindness and work ethic and waive second reading.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt 24-13 and waive the second reading and a second from Kay Sweeten. Any discussion on that motion, council? Is there an objection to voting? Saying none, those in favor, oh, this is a resolution. Will you please call the roll for us, Cheryl?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I count that five in favor and not opposed. Congratulations and thank you for bringing your family to Nibley City. We have, we have an opportunity for photographs. About, what do you want to do, Chad? Could we get the council involved? Family involved? You want to get the whole family involved?
Yeah.
Well, let's do the photo without me because it's for a family.
Yeah. All right. Maybe reverse the room? We kind of dominate your. For Mrs. Rigby instead of moving to the back. We'll put you right here. We need you to stand up. Let's have the kids in front, see their blocks. Hey, your council, an objective. That, that would be a, a honor. I figured you're here for the budget. I know you. I haven't seen the draft yet. This is the first reading. Oh, and it's on the website. All right. Everyone's shaking here. Everyone look this way, right here. One, two, three, four, five, six. Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. She was greatly awesome. We at the family loves Nibley and you guys have done a wonderful job. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Bruce. We, we are honored. And by the way, Citizen of the Year gets to drive a sports car in the Heritage Day parade as fast as they want to go.
I'll have to keep her up.
Perfect. All right. They'll be behind the sports car. We'll find a good one.
Or my tractor.
Man, the wonder, I'm coming home with shells. Get fancy. I got a package today.
I can't tell you what's up. Been running?
I have been. I went on a, we went to Mesa Verde for a family trip. I was on a hike and I'm just like, I should not be this tired. In this 89 and 70 degree weather, this is so hard. I'm in trouble.
You're gonna have fun. It's gonna be awesome.
Next council, I ask you to consider ordinance 2406, which would amend the open space subdivision, adjusting lot standards for uh, including the open space subdivision in residential zone R2A. This is the second time we've had this on our agenda. And Levi, would you give us any updates since the first reading, please?
Yeah, the only, uh, I guess the only thing to update, John, is there are some examples in teams on, on some uh, subdivisions of similar scale. Uh, so I mean, it just, just in Nibley, some of the ones we looked at, a similar scale to those that would be allowed in R2A, um, in R2A zone in an open space, you know, with an open space subdivision. And some of the examples are, uh, the cottages development off of 250 West. That, that's really a similar scale, you know, 6,000, 6 to 7,000 square foot lots and, and about the amount of open space that you'd be looking at is there as well. Um, Sunset Parks, which is another 55 and over community that's up on 10th West. That's a similar scale and, and would also be, you know, kind of what you'd be looking at. And then um, Phase Three of Ridge Line Park, which is, you know, just the single family, the um, also 55 and over community. And then, and then Rose Hill and, and Logan was, was another example and that was talked about. So the Platts and there's a few there, there's a few kind of street view images in there just to show kind of the scale of development we're, we're talking about there. Uh, but that's, there's no, there's no changes to the text of the, of the ordinance. It's all the, the same as what planning commission present, or planning commission recommended. I can give more, I, I mean, I, I guess I'll ask, do we want, do you want any more background on the ordinance and the changes that are being proposed or?
I would say silence means no unless something comes up in discussion. Okay. Uh, so the planning commission held the public hearing on this. And so, uh, there won't be a public hearing in front of the city council. Uh, and I turn it to the council for their consideration.
I'll pull up the ordinance now, the ordinance language in case there's any questions or anything, but unspecific, any, any specifics there.
So I, I have a question. I didn't get a chance to go through the whole. Is there anything in the ordinance about restricting homes backing onto other homes in the open space subdivision? Cause like the same example of the cottages and Mountain Vista and some of the others that have been under that. One of the things I love about that is you have these small lots, but they all back on, almost all of them back on open space. So they feel like they're in agricultural rural Nibley, but they're in more affordable size since they're much smaller lots. Is there a restriction on that? I couldn't remember and I didn't have a chance to go through the whole ordinance today.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's nothing that requires that. I think, I think in the design though, uh, there, there is, there is encouragement within the code of, of um, putting, consolidating open space and putting it on the periphery of the development. And so with that design, you're naturally going to get lots that back onto it. I think, I think that's why you see a lot of that. But there's no absolute requirement of that. And you know, there's other ways to, to design the open space.
Yeah, I, I would say to a point, Garrett, because the open space that comes with this ordinance, ordinance is encouraged to be part of the viewscape, part of the streetscape. So, you know, if there's a choice between putting it in front of houses on the street or behind houses. Um, I, I, I think the ordinance actually, actually prefers the streetscape to the, to the uh, open space in the back where it's not as seen by as many people.
Yeah, I just like the example, the cottages. I really, I really like. I think that's a great development. And I mean, those are 5,700 square foot lots.
And that's a small, you know, that's a smaller development. I, I think it's only
Yeah, it's like.
Say five or six acres.
Yeah, it's on like 24 homes in it.
You, you could, you could see that if, if it was a little bit larger, you, you could get more open space, obviously, but something like that could develop with, with these ordinance changes.
And so is open space HOA or privately maintained?
It, it could be, it could be private. It could be HOA or it could be city, combination of those. The, if it's city, the city council has to approve that. Um, but, but there's the, the main thing with the open space is that it needs to, um, it needs to meet a number of design standards. There's, there's seven listed and has to meet at least three of those. Uh, but and then there's a maintenance plan that's required. So it, it really depends on the development. And a lot of the ones that we've seen come through in, with an open space subdivisions are a mix of, of those three. in, with an open space subdivisions are a mix of, of those three. Some, you know, some private conservation space, some city, uh, parkland and, and then, and then some HOA.
Thanks.
What do you think, uh, Levi, about those criteria? That we have in the open space ordinance? It can be a simple yes or no answer, you can elaborate as much as you want. I think way back when, you know, prior to, that's probably about two thousand and six or seven, when we did our first conservation subdivision ordinance. Uh, we pretty much left it wide open as to, let's make a deal on what the open space is going to be. And that was a difficult process for, for people because there was no, there was no guarantee. There were no guidelines about what would be appropriate use of open space that was of benefit to the community. And, you know, while every development is unique and every piece of property has, its own uniqueness that is of value to the community that's worth preserving. Uh, we did try to put, over the years, try to put some, not only guidelines, but criteria that says to be counted as open space and valuable to the community. It has to meet these, three of these seven criteria, right? Do you think that list is appropriate? Is it, looking back on it, some, a lot of stuff happened before you got here. Um, you've been a big part of other open spaces or open space subdivisions. Do we have the right set of criteria?
I think so, I mean, I think it's probably worth reviewing and that, and, and that wasn't part of the scope.
Right, right.
Of this ordinance change. Um, but in general, I, I, I think, you know, if you only meet two of these, well, it, there's probably something else you should, uh, provide, right? So I think three is probably the right number and it, just working with the ordinance. Um, there, there may be some other, other criteria we should consider. I, I can't think of any off the top of my head, but, uh, you know, when, when Hawk Hollow came through, it, it seemed, it seemed like, you know, for example, um, if it's in a location where, uh, let, let's say the city would, would like to have parkland, uh, and it can be improved as parkland and it's, and it's valuable that way. You know, it, it may not necessarily need to meet all three. Or may, or maybe the part, or maybe there's something within the criteria that points to, okay, this is, this is, this is why it meets the criteria for being city parkland. So I think there, I think it's worth looking at again. But, but I think in general, uh, each, just looking at, you know, chronologically each, um, open space subdivision that's come through, I, I think they've been, the design has been improved over time. Um, kind of learned and adjusted things, so I think it's working, you know? I, I think, well, we continue to look at it and, and tweak some things, but yeah.
Yeah, and that's not even an ask to reevaluate the seven. But if something pops up in your head and said, you know, we need another criteria or this one's, this, this number five is being, abused, the community really doesn't benefit from that, then I say it's just an ongoing, keep your eye on the ball kind of process.
Good, good question.
That's a good question. Um, with the Sunset Parks and the cottages, I noticed, I'm not, I don't know, they weren't, were they developed as open space subdivisions? Okay.
No, they, they were, they were both developed as planning unit developments.
Okay.
But the, it was under a different ordinance.
Right.
The city repealed that ordinance and then adopted a new R P U D code. And they could be developed within our current R P U D ordinance as well, I, I think. Um, but, you know, that's a different process, it's legislative and.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I noticed in both of those neighborhoods, there are not sidewalks in front of the homes. Um, if, so with these changes that are proposed, um, the smaller lot sizes could have like twenty-five foot frontage to the road, is that correct? Um, is that enough room still for sidewalks, but in like the utility easements and everything to the front, do you think?
So, yeah, so that they could have as small as a twen- twenty-foot setback, is that, is that what you're?
Yeah, I don't know, twenty or twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-foot setback. Yeah, and, and I guess, you know, you bring up a good point that they couldn't, and under our current standards, they couldn't have those small private roads with, without sidewalks. They would have to be the full width.
So if they have the full width of sidewalk and the parking strip, is that enough space?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so we typically have a ten-foot public utility easement, that's, that's standard in front of all the homes. So it, it is additional ten. It really mirrors what, um, is in our R P U D ordinance, the twenty-foot setback. And we've seen that come through already with Ridgeline Park and Firefly Estates, which is a single family home, so.
Okay.
But the setback starts at the end of the right-of-way, which includes the sidewalk.
Right.
And the public utility and the road. So, you know, we have all that public right-of-way for all that stuff. And then you start the setback. So I don't think the setback is encroached by the public utility easement or public, uh, transportation easement or the sidewalk. Unless they go with a low-impact swell design like Apple Creek, right? That's the one exception where the sidewalk is actually on private property. There's an easement, but it's not owned by the city. And so there's a, there is a case where the setback, I don't know, where's the setback start from there? Does it start from the easement or the property line, probably the property?
Starts from the property.
Yeah, so it's a good question, but it would at most probably be the sidewalk. And everything else is already contained in the, uh, the publicly-owned right-of-way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, which is on their property, which is on the individual parcel, right?
Only in Apple Creek is the sidewalk on private property. Everywhere else, the sidewalk is actually in the publicly-owned right-of-way. And the setback starts from the property line, the private property line and public right-of-way back to the house. So it really is saying how big is your front yard gonna be? Without worrying about all that other stuff, cause that's all put into the public right-of-way.
Yeah, except, except we do typically record a ten-foot public utilities and we do require that, ten, you know, so the, the first ten feet, after, after your one foot, um, away from the sidewalk toward the house, you have another ten feet where public, additional public utilities go that aren't, you know, in the public right-of-way. And then there's ten additional feet until you get to the front of the house.
Okay. Correct.
Good question. Yeah, I think that what we, you know, there are a couple of things we balked on this way back in, two thousand and seven or something and that was, it was frontage, right? Just saying, well, what's it look like when you drive down the road? Everything else in Nibley was a hundred feet. In fact, when we went to R two A, from R two, you know, which is about a third acre average zoning density, we held on to that one hundred-foot frontage and I think that's a challenge for folks. So I think what's new here from the street point of view is frontage. And, you know, well, that, that, yeah, well, I'm just gonna stop there.
Well, it's a challenge in that it's just extra cost. Right, like you're buying a larger lot, which means you're paying more money.
Yeah.
And in today's reality is not two thousand and seven's reality, it's just a different financial climate for people to build homes.
And since then, we have gotten used to multifamily housing in Nibley City. We've understood that there is a housing shortage and, uh, attainable housing is important and so on and so forth. So we're a little bit, the climate is different now than it was back in two thousand and seven, when we said, we're not doing open space subdivisions, in part because of the frontage. It's too small on a smaller lot. But, but you've shown good examples of what that looks like.
Right, and as far as fiscal impact, I mean, the frontage, it, uh, it, it has, i- it, when you have a large frontage, uh, the city pays more per, per dwelling on infrastructure to maintain because, you know, it, it's, it's more linear feet of sewer, water, street, sidewalk, everything. Um, when you have, when you have longer frontages. So, I mean, these were just meant to be kind of more, the, the frontages that, that are changed, uh, it was primarily to make it feasible to develop at those different lot sizes. That's kind of how, you know, how we looked at adjusting those, but anyway.
I think one thing we could think about, not tonight, cause it's not really part of this proposal, but it'd be good for us to think about, if we have the smaller lots, let's say it's a R two A open space subdivision, how do we encourage a smaller house on a smaller lot? And we've, we've talked about that as recently as last night, right? At a, at a conference about, but everyone wants a big house.
Just for more affordability or why?
Yeah, they try to encourage affordability and to scale the whole thing instead of just scale the lot size. And affordability would be a big part. But I think developers, you know, they'll build a product that people want to buy. So I'm not sure how we necessarily change the consumer sentiment, sentiment either. Or, uh, Nathan, sorry.
So, um, I could use some guidance on this, cause I am, uh, I like where we're headed, I'm not, um, ready to make a motion to, uh, adopt this tonight. And I think it's because of what I talked about last time, when my original intent was to look at setbacks and everything for all of the zones. And so I don't know if it'd be helpful to get background on, on maybe why planning and zoning. I mean, they adjusted, I think, R two a little bit, but nothing else really got, did it get looked at? Did, did we, did we look at changing frontage in different areas? Or we kind of a- accepted the idea that we're basically only getting R two A moving forward or R two moving forward? Or, or R P U Ds and, and, and R ones and stuff really aren't somewhere, thinking they're gonna be developed that much anymore? Is it, I don't know, is there a reason we didn't look at, uh, frontage and stuff for others? Or was it just exclusive to the open space conversation?
No, I mean, the frontage was looked at for all the zones. I, it, it was really just looking at an eye of, with, with the lot size thresholds of what frontage makes sense. So if you have a ten thousand square foot lot, you know, ninety feet of frontage, you got about a ni- ninety by a hundred foot lot. So that's, that's kind of how the, the frontages were looked at. So the, when you have those larger lot sizes, the frontage, you know, the larger, you, you generally have larger frontages, but once you get smaller, when you get down to these, you know, what we're talking about in the R two A, uh, then, you know, eighty-four hundred, seventy-two hundred square foot lots, then you're down to seventy-five feet. So I think, I, I think that's, that, that's the reason why those ones weren't adjusted, they could be, right? That would just allow for more flexibility in the design. But I think it was just trying to right-size it for, for the different lot sizes allowances. I think they could be adjusted further down for, and now, and now, and like, that, that would just allow more flexibility.
Yeah, same with setbacks, right? You could reduce, changing setbacks allows for more flexibility too.
Yeah.
So I, I, I'm not in love with what, what's in front of us, I like where it's headed, I like the idea of changes. I'm also a little concerned about, I don't know if I'm talking policy at this point, but I don't know what motion I want to make, so. I'm also concerned with, this could still also have a T R D bonus, I'm sorry, T D R bonus. In addition, hypothetically, I don't know if mathematically it works, I haven't, or it can't.
It can't, no, with a T D R, it's all based on the base zone, not on, not on a basis within, within. And, yeah, yeah, so you, it, once, once you institute T D R, that, that puts you in a different chapter of the ordinance. And, and those thresholds kick in.
Change, yeah.
Yeah. It's kind of, it's an, it's a different option than T D R.
Are you worried that this, they're too, too tight?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to run through what it looks like, right? So what I looked at was the most recent version of, and I think kind of one of the reasons this got inspired was the Hidden Valley. And I looked at what they could do with our current ordinance and then I tried to run like, what would be different about it? And I actually think that the hesitation is, and I'm not as good as it, as Levi is, but my hesitation is that I actually think it reduces the variety of lot size within subdivisions. In that you're gonna get all small ones, right? Whereas what we currently get, you might have a half acre or something next to some of these. And it's, it's, it's all dependent upon the design and what, and how much space they have. But does that make sense? Like, it's going to look like this all the way across the board, you're not gonna have mixed-in sizes. And I don't, it's not a huge concern, but when I did math and kind of thought it out through, like, if I was a developer, I'm gonna pack them in and then put all the open space right here. I don't know if it's a problem or not, it's just something that, it's about the only thing that I was like, oh, do I like that or not? So.
I think it also depends on how the open space is, um.
Distributed?
It, yeah, well, if, if it's private open space, that generally means a larger yard. I mean, that's, that's, that's what we've gotten, it's a conservation area. They might, it might be big enough for a horse pasture, I mean, it does have to be at least a half an acre. Uh, but, but you'll get some of, you can get some of that design mixed in. I guess I'm not following you why you would, why you would have less of a variety with this one, though. I think you are gonna get smaller lot sizes, but I think in our cor- current ordinance, I'm not seeing a whole lot of variety, I mean, there, there is, I, I think it, it could have that same effect where you have a minimum and then you have an average. So I think, I think you could, you could have several, for example, if they do twenty-five percent open space, you could have several seventy-two hundred square foot lots and a couple of half-acre lots. And averaging it out, you've got eighty-four hundred square foot lot. And I think, I think in the, you know, really, really the, it's sca- it's a different scale, so it's, it's a little smaller lots than what's currently allowed. But you're, you do see that in some of the open space subdivisions that have already been approved, there is some variety in there.
Yeah, it's a good point.
In Mount Vista, you know, there's some half-acre lots, there, there's some quarter-acre lots.
It still exists, it's just smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just the average.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Within our, in our two zone, we typically see half-acre lots. I mean, that's what we've seen.
Yeah.
Cause you don't have that average and minimum discrepancy there.
That's hel- that's helpful, thanks.
Yeah.
You know, uh, Tom Bernard, our former councilman, reached out and he's wondering if the name still fits it, open space, instead of more variety? I don't know if he reached out to anybody else, but.
Let's go through the names we've already used up.
It's like a password, you can't, you can't reuse it. Conservation subdivision.
When I describe this to people outside, you know, I, I say it's like a conservation subdivision. Yeah, cause that's kind of in the industry, I think that's what we typically call this. But conservation, I mean, we ha- we already have a cluster subdivision, sometimes they're called cluster, but that's kind of a different thing. I don't know.
Well, it's, it's not.
I know, Garrett was on the planning commission when that was recommended, open space, I'm not sure if that came from your recommendation or?
I don't remember who came up with that, but I, originally, I think we called it that because that was the emphasis we wanted it to have, was we want people to focus on usable open space. You know, not little bucket parks that don't get used, but usable open space benefits to the neighborhood. So, I think that's why we have it that way. From what I remember, it's been a few years.
I'd say, I'd say if you wordsmith it again, maybe go back to an old one rather than introduce a new one. That's even more confusing when we talk about it, if we get a fourth name.
Rose is a rose.
Rose is a rose.
I know, I know my, I know the only hesitation I have on this is that, is every request going to be to rezone to an R two A? So they can do an open space subdivision and are we ready? Because how many of these will there then be? You know, I mean, I like the ones, like the examples you've had. I'm okay with those, but if that's, we're going to start putting in dozens of those? And, you know, are we ready? Are we really ready for that? I, I don't know if we're quite there yet. I don't know. To have the average lot size and then we become 5,000 square feet. Because what I don't want to see is turned into is like, I grew up in Sandy and there was nothing around me when I grew up. And now you go down there and there's nothing but high rises and it's, they've kind of ruined my Sandy where I grew up. So I don't want to see us do that. And that's my only hesitation is, will anyone still want an R two? Or do we still push an R two and make an R two A the exception? When it fits, you know, because they, I mean, the medium density could go either way. But I, where we incentivize this now under the R two A. I just wonder if every request now is going to be an R two A, R two A, R two A. And are we ready for that? I, I don't know if, I don't know if I want to see just those subdivisions. I want variety. You know, we want the life cycle. That's the whole point of the P U D is we wanted to create a life cycle. Uh, and I don't, you know, will, will we be able to do that? That's my only hesitation. But I'm willing to try it because we can always change it.
Yeah, so I think the chronology we have had, you all know, we've had rezone requests. People have come in and they said, and I think this is not, this is on land that's currently agricultural and undeveloped. It's not on land that's already zoned at R one or R one A or rural estate. This is on agricultural land, undeveloped land. And they say, well, I want to do R two A. And so we said, no, we're not going to let you do R two A because we really like this idea of a conservation subdivision. I'm going to start using that word. See if it catches on. We really like conservation subdivision, and there is no such thing as conservation subdivision in R two A. So why don't you do R two? And then we can do a conservation subdivision and conserve what is valuable, deemed valuable to the community. Well, yeah, but how come I can't do an R two A? Because there's no conservation subdivision ordinance for it. Okay, well, then, planning commission said, fine, let's do a conservation subdivision ordinance. So here we are for R two A. I mean, that's the logical process, I think, that got us here. Right or wrong? And I'm not trying to tell you how to feel on this or vote on it by any means, but that's probably what got us here.
Yeah, I, I think that's accurate. And, um, the, the current, um, the cor- the current ordinance, it, it just kind of puts the city in this in, interesting position of, well, we shouldn't approve it because of the inner workings of our ordinance. It might, it might work if, you know, if, if there was something in place to, or if, if, if there was an incentive for open space and that's what we want. Um, I think, I think to your point, just, just remember, there's, there's very little land currently zoned R two A that isn't developed. So the council will be able to decide whether, whether to approve it. And if you do, with an eye.
In the rezone.
In a rezone, yeah. At, at the rezone stage and it, and at that stage, you can determine if it's approp-, you know, an appropriate location or not.
It's true.
I think, you know, we're about to update our general plan. I think that's something we could tease out a little bit more is what's the appropriate density? Uh, maybe a little bit, if, if we want to get more fine-grained than just medium. We kind of call everything medium density in Nibley.
Yeah, I know.
Not quite high, but it's not low, unless you're, you know, unless you're an R one or rural estate, maybe that's low density. But, um, I, I think we can, we can get there. And I think they're going to come one at a time, so I, I don't, you know.
Yeah, so on that question, Garrett and Levi, I mean, you're right on. I, I say, we, we said, well, the developer said we'd like to get a rezone to R two A. And we say, no, we like open space subdivisions. We don't have that for R two A. So now we're considering an R two A open space subdivision. Instead, the council said, we'd like you to do R two because we have an open space subdivision for that. Another route we could have taken was just eliminate R two A. R two is the half acre lots is the most dense zoning in Nibley. And if you do an open space subdivision, you can get a, uh, and dedicate enough open space, you can get a bonus on that, on that density.
We talked about that last year in the planning commission.
And that was one of the things that was considered with this one, that, yeah, I mean, that originally, Brett brought that up as a, as, as an option. And then this is, you know, we looked at other options as well.
And then we didn't feel like it gave us quite enough variety. Because you do have to accommodate, you know, multiple lot sizes. Uh, and one size does not fit all in the housing market, so.
And, and for the open space, it has to meet those, three of those seven requirements, um, like a hillside or a config or something.
Something. Yeah, I, I don't think they can be unbuildable space, like steep slopes. You can't, you can't count those as, um. Just originally. Can you, can you count that as?
I think it's encouraged. I think it's encouraged in the language.
Sensitive land.
I guess we switched on that a million years ago.
Yeah.
Right.
Where do we have any steep?
John and I argued about that for a while, but I lost.
Do we have steep slopes in Nibley?
Yeah, it's open space, it's right there.
We have.
Hollow road.
We are definitely elevation challenged. There are, there's a bluff above hollow road.
That's true.
Has a steep.
That's probably the only one, though. Most of it's pretty flat.
For sledding in Nibley.
Yeah.
Some swampy areas.
And swampy.
There's some swampy areas.
Wetlands.
Yeah, it's not wet areas.
We've got a lot of that.
Natural wildland groups.
Open space, conservation space. So what do you want to do, council? You want to, uh, move forward and put a motion to adopt? Or would you like to have more time to think about it and, uh, offer a motion to continue? It's up to you guys.
But do you, Garrett, give us a motion?
Yeah.
Why is that to me? I'll make a motion and then we'll vote on it, talk about it and vote on it.
All right. Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Um, ordinance 24 dash O six, amending 211020 open space subdivision, adjusting lot standards, uh, including setbacks with R two A zones and revising setbacks in various zones, um, for second reading.
Okay, motion to approve as presented for second reading. Is there a second from Norm? Thank you.
So what would you want them to research more for bringing it back? His motion is to approve today. Oh, I thought it was to bring it backwards.
No, I think the motion is to approve.
Oh, good.
Are you still good with that second?
Well, that's open.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, I think, I think.
We can withdraw it at this point. You can vote against them.
No, I think we, I think we just test it out because.
But that's a fair question, because we've talked about, I mean, maybe we're not ready to vote on it. But what do we do in the meantime?
Yeah.
Of big, you know, to get ready to vote on.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, and, and Levi made a good point. We still have a say in the rezone, what we want. And so I think we still have some control there. No, I just want to make sure everything follows the general plan. I don't want one size fits all. I just don't want everything the same.
Well, I just think like the examples, I think the ones we have are kind of the ones we like. Um, you know, it gives us a variety or protecting the open space what a lot of people says they like.
All right, here's a discussion item, maybe not for this passing tonight, but it, it's my opportunity to talk about it. And I believe one of the seven is a stormwater basin. I'm done with that. I, I think I've made that clear, like, that is not a park. That is not something that we in Nibley really love. The count is open space that's usable by the public. Is it nice to look at? Sure. And I think especially if we landscape them. I think currently we have to land, I, I think we've actually gotten a little more loose that like it can be, it doesn't have to be grass. It can be like natural stuff. Um, so that's, I, correct me, am I wrong there?
Stormwater basin is one of the seven, yeah.
But does it have to have grass turf?
Uh, I don't, no, it doesn't, Steve. I mean, there's, there's different, you, you could have gravel, you could have grass.
Okay, so yeah, it has been loose.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I don't know, I think that's something we should consider if, if we're okay with stormwater basins being in open space, counting in all circumstances, right? Because currently it's all circumstances. You give us a stormwater basin, we count it. But we also require them.
The bigger issue is that you just don't want a stormwater basin to be considered a park.
It's both. Yeah, no, I'm okay with stormwater basin, but if you're, like, those are required anyway because of how Nibley's designed.
So you want to have a stormwater basin plus open space?
Yeah, rewarding someone with that bonus density or something we're going to require anyways weird.
To me, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. So it's, I mean, this ordinance is in front of you. You can amend it any way you want. If you want to strike.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend and strike stormwater basin from one of the seven.
Get us to that part of the ordinance.
It's a section, that was 2110 dot O two zero. Uh, section, do, 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 do. It was just there. The real.
Oh, here we go. Uh, subsection I.
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 Um, and then it would be number seven that would be eliminated.
I'll second that.
Yep, these facilities must be built to Nibley City standards.
I seven.
I'm not striking all that, I'm just striking stormwater basin as an option of one of the seven to be counted for open space.
Right.
That's my motion.
So, I mean, to be clear, it seems like since this is the section that says, open space land design standards, open space shall be dot, 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 um, in order, they must meet three of the following standards. You just strike all of number seven, is that correct?
It's not an option of one of the three things that can be met anymore.
The whole, the whole paragraph would go, I mean.
Yeah, as long as that language is also somewhere else about stormwaters being, but I'm assuming it's in design standards.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's in there be, I, I think, I think this is specific to.
Just open space.
If you have an, if you have a stormwater basin in an open space subdivision, you have to have trees and these other things. But we don't necessarily require that in all.
All stormwater basins.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
I think, I think when I can know that, they, 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 well, no.
I'll, I'll second that so I can discuss it.
So I have a motion to amend to strike all of seven. That's the way I'm going to interpret that. And I have a, a motion from Nathan and a second from Norm for amendment.
Is there any stormwater basins that we've included for open space that has been beneficial?
That we've, other than stormwater?
Yeah.
So I think enhanced natural spaces are candidates for an amenity to the community. But you might get those anyway because they're natural spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Not a stormwater basin, that's different.
Mm-hmm.
But sometimes stormwater basins, if it's, if they're wet enough, look like natural spaces.
Yeah.
But this says you have to plant grass and all that stuff.
Trees.
Trees, right.
And so if you have open space and they're including the stormwater, would that make that area bigger? Because they're not always full of water and stuff. I'm just trying to think of if, if we take it out and they're going to put it behind somebody's house because now we're going to count it, we can stick it anywhere.
I think, I think the way that this would pan out is there's probably going to be some stormwater basins that could count if you meet the other.
Three of the other six now.
The other, like, let's say it's a stormwater basin that's also a buffer from the road. It can count as that.
Okay.
Or have pedestrian access on the perimeter. It's just saying that the stormwater basin in and of itself doesn't add, but it, 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 it's not a standard. It's not a design standard for it to alone be a stormwater basin.
Okay.
So to clarify, in between Ridge Lane Park and the road, there's two very large storm basins, right?
No, those are commercial.
Commercial paths.
Those are coming in laughs.
Scuba shops, I think.
Or a car wash.
Use it there.
Scuba shop?
No.
We're a commercial application, right?
I think that's a good idea.
I, it's always bugged me that they get credit for something we're going to have, have them do anyway.
Yeah.
It's kind of like allowing the right of way.
Yeah, we had, I mean, I remember going to the mat with Cotton Woods when, and the proponent at the time who still lives in Nibley is still mad at me because they said, you, you cannot count uh, setbacks as open space. You have to have the setback because you have to have the setback. And then in order to get the open space subdivision and the bonus for that, you have to have open space. You don't get to count them both. You, you count the whole front yard then as, as open space. That's double dipping. This is similar, right?
Yep.
I like, I'm all wrong to vote tonight now.
Sorry?
Nothing.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Do you have an opinion for us as the planner?
I think it makes sense.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else, Steve or, or Justin, if you had any.
On some more specifically?
Getting rid of it as an option for open space.
As a amenity for open space that gives them a density bonus, counting it.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's the sensitive and constrained land, right?
Yeah, so, and, you know, honestly, it's steep slope, what they can do it.
Right, it's going to be expensive to do.
It's really expensive, so, I mean, if that's your line of thinking, I don't know. I think you've got bigger problems, you've got a lot of other problems you may have to deal with as well. Whether stormwater ponds can be useful, open space amenity, in the right application, it can, but it's very difficult. We, we need to struggle.
We use them.
And we're trying to make some changes that make them more usable, but that's still.
Struggling in that they're full of water?
They're always squishy.
But that's the purpose of them.
Purpose of them is collect the water, hold the water long enough and trickle the water out so that doesn't flow downstream.
Or percolate it in.
Or percolate.
Right.
Right.
The purpose is to control floodwater and some water quality benefits that may come with that, that slow the water down. Some of the settings that may fall out, something like that. The purpose is not to pull the water off. In fact, our stormwater, our standard says it has to be dry within 72 hours after a rainy event.
How long are ours staying full?
Right. Well, yeah. They're not doing much percolation if they're already saturated, are they?
So if you think about it, if you're going to hold it, slow it down and trickle it out, that's detention. You could smell it off, if you want it to go into the ground, you have a big pond.
Big white one.
White.
Yeah, it's definitely a safety.
Detention, really difficult to do. Detention seem to be more doable, but still difficult.
So let me ask you this, is there a way to do that better if we include stormwater basins, but we ask of different things for those to be counted? Like you said, maybe it's a design change that you guys are already on top of, but.
I think we're already on top of trying to make these dry and function properly. We are on that.
Yeah, like, when's the last time you used one for a field, Chad? Right, because we used to use them for fields on occasion, but.
Some of that is quickly, so, um, Nibley Gardens, uh, that's been fairly reliable, but Meadow View, not so reliable. And those are really the only two that we've applied. But I would say there's a lot of communities use stormwater for parks, but I think the challenge in Nibley, at least with my limited experience, is we have a lot of water. And it's different than a lot of communities. So I, I think I agree with Justin, it's, it's just tough to get that right and that sizing, that spacing. I, I think I agree with Justin, it's, it's just tough to get that right, and that sizing, that spacing, and, and he would know better than I would.
Thank you.
Limited use.
But like, the frisbee off course on the west, that's a, that's a great example, that's, I've seen that thing hold once in, uh, nine years I've been in.
It's a great picture, but sure.
Yeah, it is a beautiful picture.
And I think it enhances the area, right?
It's full?
Not when you, I mean, you can't play frisbee on it when it's full of water, but most of it, it's not full of water all the time. It enhances the experience.
They were dry within.
Because they're, because they're larger and designed better? Why, what's the difference?
It's all about where. Groundwater changes, and you know, uh.
Well, it doesn't, we have a map for that.
A map.
But they stay high, they can stay dry, but if they get into the ground, then they just don't stay dry. That's why that one works, it's good, it's high.
I think something else, uh, that seems a little problematic about the language in the current code is. That last few sentence, or la, last phrase, it must be owned and maintained by Nibbly City. It seems like we've been trying to, if possible, like if there's, if there's an HOA. And, and it's, you know, the impact is coming from that development, why not have the HOA own and maintain it? I don't see why. That's necessary here either, but if you strike the whole thing, then.
Yeah, that's another reason to get rid of it, cause. I don't think we have to own the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a reason to incentivize or to require outright require that.
Unless we're gonna use them for cool things, which sounds like we.
I mean, if the city wants it, the ordinance allows us to take that. Let them already.
If they meet three other criteria.
Right.
Right, just this is no longer one of the three.
So if it's HOA or privately owned, then who? Who keeps, make sure it's working, functioning, like it doesn't feel.
If we have a signed agreement that says you will maintain this in such a way that it will function properly. And if it doesn't, the city reserves the right to go in, do that maintenance and charge for the efforts.
So we'll still inspect them and make sure.
Absolutely, we are required to inspect them, I. Once a year?
Okay.
Every three. Yeah, sorry, I get mixed up on the requirements, but there's lots of inspections we have to do.
Okay, but we also spend a lot of time mowing it, right? Not just, not just the stormwater portion of it, but a lot. Lot of just.
Yeah, yeah, we, we definitely spend a lot of time, our parks department is, really should be called the Parks and Stormwater Mowing Department. But we do, we do inspect private and public, we're required, for, per our MS four permit.
Okay.
And, and so, do they have to have somebody licensed to, okay, they just. He just. Said check, huh? Okay. So, is our stormwater fee that we collect, is it? Is it very, this, how many stormwaters that we have, or, or not?
Uh, our stormwater fee is just based on a utility fee, each, each, uh, each residence pays the same fee, and then anything commercial. Did a comparison, how much impervious land do they have? Average house divided by that, and you pay that number of, similar to how our sewer works, but. Uh, we are currently in the middle of doing our sewer ma, or sorry, our storm drain master plan, and part of that master plan is to reassess that fee. And see if that fee needs to be adjusted. You know, I, 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 I think, um. It likely needs to go up maybe a little bit, not, not drastically, but, uh, the, the two fees I'm worried about are the water and the stormwater.
But, but it isn't very, um, per subdivisions where they might be more.
Well, not the utility fee, but under construction, there is an inspection fee, because while you're under construction, there are much. Higher requirements for inspections and efforts.
Yeah.
And so, uh, definitely those pay per lot, so there's a base fee plus a per lot fee.
Okay.
So the bigger your lot, the subdivision is, the more you pay that fee.
Okay. Thanks.
But all that, all that post-construction stuff, inspection, that's all just gotta come out of the, the utility fee, and that's on us.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a utility, just like delivering culinary water, right? It's a system that needs to be maintained, it needs to be inspected, it needs to be, it's, it's. We gotta take care of the rain, just like we have to provide culinary water and take care of the sanitary sewer.
So if, if you have a subdivision that's empty away and they maintain their own, um, pond. They're not exempt from the stormwater.
Not at all.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're required, actually, per our permit, to get in turn two agreements with them, to outline all that.
And they have to get us access.
Yeah. I was just thinking, man, I'm paying twice, my HOA is paying to maintain this, I'm paying on my stormwater fee to have this, that's almost nice. Thanks for the detour.
Question about stormwater fee and what it's for and why it is what it is in a.
Very exciting.
Hopefully, two to three months.
Look forward to it.
Ready to vote on the amendment? Any objection to voting on the amendment? Seeing none? Uh, the amendment is to strike item seven from the criteria that can be counted as open space. To achieve the density bonus. Those in favor of striking item seven, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Good, it passes, so we have an amended motion in front of you.
After doing the Nibbly City tour, I know what you're talking about with.
Hey, what's next?
We still.
We still have the motion to approve.
Yeah, what's next on the list of things to talk about? I'll tell you when we're ready for another agenda.
Sorry.
I'm gonna. I'm, I'm gonna go with that. Is there an objection to voting on the amended motion? Seeing none, let's proceed with the vote, this would be for second reading, which would make it law. And Cheryl, when you're ready, if you would please call the roll for us, thank you.
In favor? In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you, council, I, uh, count that five in favor, none opposed. Um, Levi, let's, and, and so the motion passes, we'll, we'll. How should we talk to the planning commission about this?
I, I mean, I can update them.
Okay, we can, can you capture this discussion for the, for them and say?
Stormwater in particular.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we, we, we changed their recommendation, I think we always owe them. Uh, and I'm not saying they'll be mad about it or anything else, but we probably owe them an explanation as to why we went. Either short or beyond their expectation, their, their recommendation.
Yep, I'll, I'll do that.
Thanks.
When you get a flood of thirteen, uh, approve, never kidding.
What?
We'll prove the reason still. Is there any R two A zones currently? We just said there isn't. It's not developed, that's not developed?
It's not much.
There's not much that's not developed, pretty much everything at least has some kind of preliminary.
Something on it, yeah.
Okay, let's, uh, let's see if we can tackle a public hearing on ordinance twenty-four oh seven. This is an ordinance that, uh, provides for compensation of elected statutory officers and department heads of Nibbly City. We've done something similar in the past, but it's a little different this year. Justin, do you wanna introduce it for us, please? And this would be an introduction leading into the public hearing.
Yeah, so, yeah, I should, or didn't bring my glasses, scan down, 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 yeah, that's it. Okay, perfect, uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, as you mentioned, this is a little bit different than what's been done in the past, every year in the past, we've done a similar ordinance for the city council, the mayor. And other statutory, it used to be the judge, which went away for a while, I think the treasurer is. Right now that used to fall under this requirement, but, uh, Senate Bill ninety-one passed this year and added a whole bunch of requirements for department heads to be. On a very similar ordinance, uh, and we are, it's, it's. We are required to hold a public hearing, essentially, to allow the public to be able to. View and comment on the salaries of elected officials, and, uh, I don't even honestly know what. A definition of statutory. I don't even know what that is, means, but, uh, and department heads is kind of the big thing, right? Uh, we had to add all of the department heads here, so you can see all the department heads, uh, what their salaries are. Uh, what the proposed salary is in the budget, uh, as well as any sort of bonus, uh, that they, that they are allowed to receive. And, uh, just try to make it easy, uh, we, you know, we wrote the increase on the si, uh, the second last column, and then the reason in the very last column for. What, uh, the increase was for. As you can see, most of those are just the COLA, the cost of living adjustment. That is equal to what's been discussed and talked about in the previous budget workshops of four percent. And so, um, on that note, we probably don't want to, uh, approve this tonight, uh, and waive second reading. We should probably wait till the budget is passed, uh, for the second reading before we adopt this for second reading as well, so. Um, any, any, oh wait, one more thing, uh, in the budget, we've discussed the possibility of doing the compensation study. I sent you guys all that documentation about what that compensation study is, depending on how that thing shakes out. We may or may not be bringing this back to you to address some of those things, um. Before next budget year, I guess, as I said, this might be a little redundant, you might see this again in four or five months when we get that study done. Uh, depending on how it shakes out, so, uh, give you a little heads up there.
What, sorry, what's, um, is this in the packet?
I believe so.
Sorry, which one is it?
It is eleven point one, must have been order number maybe.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah.
Did you find it?
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, you can also see, uh, you know, something we've talked a little bit about, I think, uh, the policy here has been in, I don't know, in my opinion, pretty generous. And what's been happened in the past, and the, kind of the system that was set up where. When you are employed at Nibbly City, you get begged into one of those steps or, uh, and grades in that chart, and then each step thereafter was five percent. So every year, uh, employees are eligible for, uh, five percent pay for performance. Depending on whether or not they've performed at their job in addition to the COLA. And so, it, it, employees have, have progressed rapidly, and so a lot of employees are already at the top of their pay scale. That's why they're only looking at the four percent COLA, um, and, and those that aren't, uh, have the possible merit next to them, if that makes sense. And I think it kind of shows, you know, maybe that's, maybe we're due for a reset, um, just to make sure everybody's where they should be. Cause a lot of people are topped out with the old system, but that's an old system, I don't know that, how much effort and, uh, thought was put into that system. As, um, so, really hopeful and, uh, excited to do this compensation study to, you know. Get some help on understanding where people are at, and, you know, for the position that they are, as well as where they fall within a range. That that position is, is paid in the industry throughout Utah, so, and the surrounding area, so, uh, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, I think that's sufficient to take us into the public hearing. Is there any objection to starting to opening the public hearing, seeing none? Invite the public to come and address the council on this matter. I thought Bruce Reapie would talk to us. Uh, seeing no public comment, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to the next item, which is consideration of this ordinance. Twenty-four dash oh-seven that establishes compensation for these folks, including us.
So I apologize, I shouldn't have mentioned that. Um, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, gee, four, three, four years ago, maybe, um, the, the, the. Council at the time adopted a policy to, um, basically. Let the council have the same COLA that is approved for the staff, because I think there was a period where it kind of got behind. And there was, there was kind of a big jump, and I believe that's why they've tried to, uh, at least. Councils in the past have accepted the COLA, uh, for that salary to increase.
Yeah, I read something in the package, it was two thousand fifteen, if I remember right.
Yeah, it's been a minute. I remember the discussion. Time flies. It's a discussion.
So, my only question, I want to make sure I understood, so the proposed salary in this all fits in the budget? Under.
That's a great question, um, so, so these are salaries on how they are, um, budgeted. The details are in that salary spreadsheet that I showed you, that, uh, gets all calculated out and distributed on the budget, so. Um, we'll maybe mention this later, but some of those are actually budgeted, uh, higher than they actually are for particular reasons. Uh, in most cases, it's, you know, we're budgeting for a full-time employee and their benefits, even though they're not. We haven't pulled the trigger and actually made them a full-time employee yet, and so, um, so this, this is really. Uh, you know, salary, and, but we actually budget a little bit more. Uh, in the budget, but it is, but it is covered in the proposed budget.
Just using the certified tax rate, right, without a truth taxation increase.
Correct, at this point in time.
I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding that right?
Yeah.
This is my first.
Yeah, we'll talk more about that, but the way the budget's built now, there, it's accepting the certified tax rate, and, and it's.
Covers these proposed costs, okay?
We need a new word for certified tax rate, it doesn't mean it's the correct tax rate, it means it is the rate certified by the assessor. To mean that no additional money comes in from existing housing or businesses.
Assessor black box rate.
Sorry?
Assessor black box rate.
Yeah, well. We probably understand the process, we just don't. We just don't know how it works, that doesn't make any sense, does it? Right? Okay, and so all of the discussion, I think, is very appropriate about, you know, the salary structure and the, the. Process that you've outlined that we're gonna go through, we have to be competitive, we have to. Assure that, uh, we're, we're paying all of our employees the appropriate amount. For now, I mean, the salaries are, this is the way it's, this is the way it's being proposed. And that's as, as you all have said, this is what's cooked in, baked into the budget for now. Nathan?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve as presented, uh, for first reading, I think.
Yep.
Okay, and is there a second? From Aaron, thank you very much. Discussion on the motion to approve for first reading? Without objection, we'll proceed to vote, seeing no objection, those in favor of first reading on ordinance twenty-four oh seven, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, we'll bring this back for second reading, thanks, Justin, thank you, council. Uh, next. Should we take a. Small break before we dive into the. Uh, resolution on, on the budget, or depending on how much we've, we've been through that a few more, a few times already, maybe you feel like. We don't need a bunch of discussion tonight. Someone give me a motion to either, someone give me a motion for a break if you want one. Alright, so I see, I see a motion, is anyone opposed to taking a short recess? Okay, we'll come back in five, thank you, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
If we want to do something other than the certified tax rate, tonight is kind of the deadline. And I should have given you more of a heads up on that, but I, and I apologize, but that's how it is. The other big question for you tonight is, we have been going around and around and around for two years now with UDOT and some Safe Routes to School money that Levi was gracious enough to get for us. When Levi received that grant, it was state money that they were willing to give us. And at the time, it was hurry and go build your sidewalk and then we'll reimburse you after the fact. Well, what happened was the federal, the feds came down on the states about how they were moving money around in their programs to get away from federal requirements. And what they, what they were doing was taking the, the federal money and exchanging it with municipalities and getting kind of a discounted rate so that they could try to, the municipalities were taking a smaller amount of money to avoid having to do the federal requirements. And then they were lumping all the federal money together to try to do these bigger projects, which honestly completely makes sense. That's what really should happen. But there was a bunch of shuffling and our money got moved from the state pot to the federal pot. So we're talking, you know, $150,000 to $200,000 project requiring federal hoops to jump through. And it's, it's, it's bonkers. And so we've been, you know, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. You know, Tom and I have talked a lot about it and honestly, we feel like it's almost sixes for us to either jump through all the federal hoops and receive the $100,000 from them. It's probably going to cost us really close to that to jump through all their hoops and the bids are going to be higher because of all the hoops that the contractors have to go through. Tom and I are ready to walk from this $100,000 and just pull the trigger with the money we have budgeted and complete the project, get the sidewalk on the south side of 3200 South, move the crossing guard and increase the safety for the kids to get to school. I need your direction on that.
Could you make it a bigger project for the 250? Because then you say it was a 250.
Well, if it's 250, well, it's going to be a $250,000 project and we're going to get $100,000 from the feds. Or we can just go build it for $150,000 and be done. And the money out of our pocket is going to be pretty close to the same. Now, it, it's not going to be as good, right? Like it will probably come out a little bit on the short end, but I, we just, we just don't think it's worth it. Typically, as I hear in the industry right now, unless a project's in the million and a half dollar range, it's not worth going through the federal process. And we're talking about a $200,000 budget. Well, I, I don't know. I guess I need your, your blessing on willingness to walk from that or direct us to keep plowing down the path, and we will. And.
Let me clarify. When you talk to Tom and say, go and build the project ourselves, you don't mean our city staff, you mean just?
No, just, yeah. We're ready. We're ready to bid it. We've been ready for a long time. We were hoping to have this, to start construction the day school got out and have this thing completed for when, when kids got back to school this fall. And we finally, after our fourth project manager, I had to text region one manager and say, go talk to your staff, review this project and give us some guidance and some direction. And we got a phone call the next day that says, basically said, you need to start over. You need to rebid this through our process. You need to hire one of our designers. You need to, you know, you go through all these processes that we require to get this money. And then at that point, Tom and I are both just like, I mean, I don't know what else to do besides.
Well, you're saying the money we, we could use to do it ourselves is already budgeted, right?
Yeah.
Sounds like just. I buy a killer one.
Pick this up. The way that, the way the budget is written right now on page 21, you know, we, which summarizes, there's a table that summarizes grant review and we expected in '22, '23, $110,000 for a grant for Safe Routes to School. We didn't receive it. We expected a grant in '23, '24, the same amount for $110,000 for Safe Routes to School. We didn't receive it. And in '24, '25, it's not in the expected column.
So yesterday.
Yeah.
Before I printed your, whenever you got, the day before you printed that.
And so that's on page 21. Also the capital project revenue on page 70, same thing. It, it does not anticipate the way the budget is presented now. I'm not saying you're committing to counsel to that. You're asking for the counsel's advice.
Asking for your direction. I mean, we, we will do it and if you give us the direction to do so, but we both believe it's in our best interest and we're going to be really close to the same amount of money with less headache.
Sounds like just do it on your own. Use your time elsewhere.
Okay.
3200 South is this?
It's between 800 West and 12th West, parts of that, some of that.
Not complete sidewalk on the south side of the road.
And so we have a crossing guard at 8th West and then we have crossing guards on the other side at the roundabout. And so we're hoping to be able to consolidate those and do some sort of crossing in front of the school and have one crossing guard there potentially, one last at the roundabout, depending on what happens.
Yeah.
This would complete sidewalk. It would, so our, our portion of money was from 8th West to the beginning of Nibley Meadows because we knew Nibley Meadows was coming. And so we're letting them construct their piece. And then there's a short gap from there to the roundabout. And we, if you recall, in the land swap discussion with Hawk Hollow, we brought that up this week that, oh, hey, as part of this deal, we want you guys to finish that sidewalk while you're there. And they were reasonable to at least looking at if that would work for them. So we're hoping to get that sidewalk in in the next couple of years, but.
Should there be some sort of political follow-through, not on you, but maybe on me that tries to talk to the people that screwed this up?
Great question. You know, it might be worth one more last ditch effort. Seems like it'd be worth maybe trying.
And again, maybe not on you, but maybe on an elected official to say, come on, guys, you know? We're talking about the safety of kids getting to school. And who's the agencies at UDOT?
UDOT is the agency that is tasked with ensuring that the federal requirements are met.
And you have spoken with Rob White.
I asked him to talk to his staff and give direction through text, but I have not had verbal communication. I have had some also text messaging with Senator Wilson. He's indicated he'd be willing to do what he can. So, I mean, as the budget goes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, if the council says, look, let's just cut our losses and get this thing built instead of spending the same amount of money.
And time.
And time.
Another year.
And a distraction and everything.
Not away another year.
I'm talking about follow-through to say, let's not let, not, not to our staff, but to whoever dropped the ball on this at UDOT or whatever, say, this isn't right and this should not happen again. Don't do this to us again.
Yeah, it's, it's great.
We can talk about that offline.
Okay. So as far as I'm getting direction, then I'm going to leave it out of the budget. I'm maybe going to make one last political ditch effort to see what we can do. And if we get it, great. If we don't, I'm going to plow forward and get it done. And then other than that, it's just any amendments that you guys want to talk about, anything that's been presented before in the last workshops. Okay, I mentioned the certified tax rate. That's based off of the certified taxable value. So all the property is assessed in Nibley City and the assessors look at all that and come up with that number. That number is $761.5 million, which is about a 10% increase over last year. I'll show a graph of how that's, percentage-wise, how that's gone up in the past. But you can see this is how the value has crept up over the years. This was that crazy year shortly after COVID.
Yeah.
When things just went crazy. And so about of, of the increase, about 30, about $70 million, 30 of it was from new growth and about 40 million of it was from the increase in property values. And so if that kind of plays into how they calculate that certified tax rate, but, and how they, they calculated it out to be .1378. I feel pretty good about my crystal ball guess on, my rate was a little bit off on how I calculated, but the actual revenue that came in was off $600 off out of a million. So I'm pretty happy about that.
Well done.
But this gives you an idea of the tax rate, what it would be, and if you wanted to adopt anything else, what it would mean. I'm sorry, that blue, you can't see very good, but. So in, in this column, you would, you know, is the actual price. So I believe the median house in Nibley is going to be right around $500,000. So I really should have run my glasses. That's a 690, 690. And so that's what, you know, everybody would pay at the certified tax rate. This would be the midpoint between the 1/600th, what was the historical rate. Sorry, I should have mentioned that. Historically, for many, many, many years, Nibley City held 1/600th as the tax rate and went through truth and taxation every single year to hold that rate. And that crazy year on that graph that we talked about, we, as, as the council decided not to do the full amount, but still did a property tax increase. And then last year, the certified rate came in so close to what we had prepared everything on. It just wasn't worth going through truth and taxation. So it's only in the last couple of years here that Nibley City's not gone through truth and taxation. But these, these columns over here are kind of the increase you would see for each of those rates in the blue. I, I believe that a $500,000. But these, these columns over here are kind of the increase you would see for each of those rates in the blue. I, I believe that a five hundred thousand dollar home would be paying about eighty dollars a year more if you were to adopt the one six hundredth as opposed to the certified rate. So that, uh, that's how that chart works. If you've got more questions about that, I'm happy to answer them. But in the, in, you know, summarize all that. If to accept the certified tax rate, the revenue in the general fund is going to go up by about point eight percent, point eight percent. And that's, you know, due to that growth. And, uh, to go with the one six hundredth would be about four percent into the general fund, which is less than one percent of the entire revenue that goes into the city. But the general fund portion is about five million. And so that's about four percent. If you go on the midpoint, obviously that's two. So, um, does that make sense?
Yeah, the, the, the line graph, sorry. Can you show me that again? The Y axis is money.
Yeah, that's the, that's certified taxable value. So that's the value that gets times by the rate to determine how much revenue will come into the general fund from property tax. And again, that's, uh, that's about a million bucks. Uh, one million, fifty thousand bucks of revenue of the five hundred and change thou- yeah, five hundred thou-, uh, sorry, five million, sorry, that, uh, is in the general fund. And you can see all that on the pages, uh, the general fund, uh, pages of the budget with graphs about each source and where it kind of comes from.
So saying that the certified taxable value is there at seven hundred and sixty one million dollars, which is a 10% increase from last year. Thirty million is from growth.
Correct.
And forty million is from increase in property values. But if we go with the certified tax rate, we don't recognize the increase in taxes from increase in property values.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. What was I trying to say there?
Straighten me out. Go ahead. Come, come up. Can you go to the mic?
No, go ahead.
Can you do it from the mic? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
All right. So what we don't recognize is, um, the, the increase, I, I guess the way I understand it. We, they don't count new growth as being part of that, part of the, um, as going against your certified taxable value. They're only looking at the increase in property values. So I feel like it's the opposite of what you said.
So that.
Taking into consideration when they're computing our certified tax rate, the increase in property values. They don't take into consideration new growth. They just let us have that money without having to reduce the rate.
Right. We get the increase in tax revenues from new growth by going with the certified rate.
Yes.
But we don't get the increase in property values that is not new growth, old growth.
Yeah. So it would be.
Unless we change the, the rate, which is not the certified rate.
Right. So the increase is seventy, seventy million. Why was the heck was I trying to say right there?
And that's not, that's value. That's not taxes. Cause you have to take one six hundredth or one point oh, oh, one, five of those numbers to. I'm just, the cert. Our taxable value went up by 10%. I should have, I have a worksheet for this. I'll do it for the next time we look at the budget.
Yes, this is not revenue. This is the taxable value.
Yeah, right. So we had a 10% increase in taxable value in Nibley City from last year.
Seventy million.
Seventy million. So about three sevenths of that was from growth and four sevenths of that was from increased values of existing property.
Yes, that is correct. Does not use and calculate.
Yeah.
Can you go to the next slide for a moment? Um, so remind me, last year, which rate did we use?
Last year we were point oh, oh, one, four, five, I believe.
Which was the certified tax rate? And this year the tax rate has decreased.
Yeah. So the certified tax rate will always go down.
Yeah.
If property values go up.
Yeah, to maintain the same increase. I get that. And historically we went with the point zero, zero, one, six, six, seven. But that doesn't really have any bearing on what we should do this year.
No, I'm just pointing it out because Mayor and I have had a lot of discussions about policy on whether we should go back to that or try to work back up to that. Over the years and what kind of way I've built the budget this year is not going, but just adopting this rate that I estimated.
Which, which the rate you estimated for this year in the budget was?
Really, really close. It was like one, three, something else. I can't remember. And then.
Slightly higher.
Slightly higher. But then when I calculated the revenue, because I was doing funny business, it was, it was really close. So even though I was a lot, I was closer on the revenue than I was the uh, actual rate, because I kind of do some rounding and some other things like that. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question anymore.
No, you did.
And the difference you said was fifty thousand or sixty thousand?
Um, between what?
So what you, what you did the budget on and what the certified tax rate is.
They're basically essential, identical.
Yeah, you missed that by six hundred dollars.
Oh, six hundred dollars. So it's the same.
But there's a different, there's a different delta in dollars if you go with the one six hundredth or if you go with.
But why is one six hundred such a magical number?
History.
So you don't have to do it big and later, but.
Yeah. I mean, the, the problem here is, as I see it, it's just me. I mean, you just keep chugging along and every time property values go up, you say, we're gonna keep the same rate and collect more money because property values went up. That's the way most taxes work. The sales tax rate is the sales tax rate. If you have inflation, the sales tax rate doesn't change and you pay more money in sales tax. If the income ta, if you have an increase in your income, maybe because of inflation, maybe because you're more valuable to your employer. The income tax rate doesn't change. If you get more money from your employer, you pay more tax. The property taxes not, doesn't work that way.
Right.
So it's just been, do we, do we, do we incrementally try to keep up with from twenty years ago, what we said, what somebody said, this is about what it takes to operate this city. Takes about one six hundredth property tax rate. And we either keep up with that or we lag behind and then say, hey, we don't have enough money to run the city. And then you have to make a big adjustment. So it's a bunch of small adjustments or one big adjustment or don't make any adjustments and decide where we spend money instead of having the money.
Well, we get income because we've had a lot of growth. Like you said, we've had a lot more home buildings and stuff.
Yeah, but you have to pay to serve those people.
Right.
That's why you don't call additional income from growth, a tax increase, because you have to have more fire. You have to have more pipes. You have to have more, you have to have more law enforcement. You have to have all those more things. So that's not a tax increase. That's covering what the, what the growth brought.
But it gives you more money in the budget.
And, you know, and this is where Justin and I have had long discussions and, you know, I'll, I'll turn it to you, Aaron. What's the right number? One six hundredth is the historic number.
Yeah, I just wonder.
What's, I'll ask you.
How recently we evaluated that one six hundredth number to say like, yeah, this is still the right number. We need to maintain adequate finances in our city.
It's in the budget. You tell me.
Yeah. Um.
So I think if you hold your thought for a minute, I'll see if you can circle back around.
I know. I just have a one quick question. You said this eight, this seventy nine, forty eight that you were referring to. Explain to me once more what you said that is, if we went with one six hundredth this year, that people with a five hundred thousand dollar home would be paying an extra eighty dollars.
Correct.
That's what you said. Above the certified tax rate.
Yep. So to get back to the one six hundred. Five hundred thousand dollar home would pay an additional eighty bucks.
Yeah.
Over the certified rate.
Yeah, for, of, over the course of the year.
Over the year, eighty bucks a year. Correct.
So an extra, what, six dollars, seven dollars a month or something?
Right. So I think when we get to, let me, uh, I might, um, I might hit some other things, but I think we can circle back around to this discussion and why it's important. And it goes back to what we talked about last night at that training about how much you can leave in your general fund and how much should be swept into capital projects. And that to me is really how you weigh whether or not a number is accurate. It's, it's how much money did you bring in that you didn't have to use this year that you can put into your savings? And is that in balance? Is that the right number? So we'll, we'll circle around and, and kind of talk about that here in a minute. When I get through a couple of other things, if that's okay.
Proceed.
Any more questions here? Um, sales tax, um, sales tax, this is a graph that shows, uh, both the, you know, kind of the property tax growth, but also the sales tax. We take a pretty modest, uh, which has kind of been pretty flat, but we, we are projecting a seven percent increase in the sales tax this year. That's historically been pretty, uh, pretty accurate through here. And so we're projecting to bring in about one point four million. I think we're going to see probably one point five this year. I'll explain that in just a second. Uh, so that's how the, those two numbers between the, uh, property tax and the sales tax make a giant dent in what is the general fund. Uh, these are the percent increases and all these, all these graphs are in the budget. They're in the book. You can, you can see them all, but, uh, you can kind of, uh, this is, uh, what's being proposed here, uh, and just kind of compare, uh, across of what's ever happened, uh, over the years. And again, uh, we, we always try to, we, you know, budget conservatively on the revenue. We want to guess a little low than we think we're going to get. And we budget expenses a little higher than we're going to get. And so that's why those kind of fall in where they did. Um, okay. So back to the, the whole rate discussion and how much money did we not use this year in the general fund that we need to push into the capital projects? So currently as it stands, there's about three point two million dollars in the general fund. We're expected, I already mentioned to, to, to bring in the five million in revenue in general fund. We can only hold thirty five percent of that, which is roughly one point nine million dollars. So we need to sweep out of there and settle somewhere around one point nine million dollars. And this is where it gets I play some crystal ball funny math here and kind of make some guesses. Uh, credit cards are a little, a little behind on how they're processed and how they hit the budget. Uh, we still have a few kind of sizable expenses to get through before the end of the year with heritage days, the children's theaters, uh, burning through their budget right now with props and doing some things. We have another payroll session. So, so that number is going to change a little bit. In addition to that, we receive sales tax almost two months behind the month they were uh, real, uh, people actually.
Generated.
Generated. Uh, and that's just the way it works. So, um, we still have three months left of sales tax, which is about one point, uh, or excuse me, it's about a hundred and it's been averaging right around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a month. So that's going to bring in, you know, about that point three, five million, kind of, kind of wiggle all that out and we're going to need to sweep out between eight hundred and like one, I think it's really going to come in real close to a hundred, about a million bucks. So, you know, when we bid the budget last year, when we scheduled all our revenue, we scheduled our expenses, we thought we were only going to have about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to transfer into the capital projects. But we have more than that now. Why? Why is that? It's because, you know, why do we have this surplus? And it goes back to the principle of, you know, budgeting revenue low and budgeting expenses high. In addition to that, Amy and I really kind of went through the budget today to kind of try to explain that and some of the, you know, reasons why, um, there's this surplus and a lot of it boils down to, uh, you know, just good, uh, choices and, uh, efficiency with how we're spending the money. We're not spending every dime that we're given. We only to date spent about seventy five percent of what we said we were going to spend. Um, some of that, a, a big chunk of that is goes back to those salaries that we already talked about. I mentioned that we, we budget for some positions full time, even though they're not. Uh, so there's a pretty good sizable amount of, uh, salary budgeted that, you know, if that person was to leave and we had to bring somebody in and they, you know, required full time or we wanted them to be full time. Uh, sometimes, you know, we've had situations where people wanted three quarter time, uh, and so we were able to work that out and we didn't need to spend that money. But we always budget those salaries as a full-time employee and calculate benefits as a full-time employee. So, so that's kind of a, 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 a big number as, as well as just, we try to put a little cushion, uh, in the salaries because it is such a big, big number. Uh, listed a couple of other things in here that, you know, when, and, and, you know, that were kind of big things. And then there's just a lot of lines throughout the budget where we just don't spend right to the penny. Uh, we, we have money left over and it adds up quickly. And so, you know, we can kind of boil that down to, you know, is that too much? Right? Is a million bucks too much to put into, uh, the capital projects? And, you know, it really is about uh, about twenty percent. And the way I broke it down in my head is, is really depending on how when the final numbers come in, we probably got about a five percent, five to 10% safety factor on, on expenses and about 10% of our revenue is being put into savings. So to me, that's the question that should help answer the certified rate or whatever tax rate. Is that the right number? Is that the right number to be putting into savings, the money that's left over to make that decision? To me, that's I think a critical point to consider. And I'm not telling you what it is. I'm just saying you that, that's about where it comes in. And let you decide on whether you think it needs to be higher or lower. I wouldn't recommend going lower. I would recommend if, if you think that's too much, then I think we would, you would back off over the years by, you know, accepting the certified rate. Um, as, as opposed to lowering it, but that's a, that's your decision. That makes sense.
This is your last slide.
Uh, yeah. But this is, uh, that, that's kind of the new stuff. Um, and then I would, all I was going to do is run back kind of over the big, big ticket punch list, uh, you know, items in the budget that were kind of these few items. And then that's just show you how much grant money we're expecting to come in and then answering any questions you may have.
So this year we have something like a million dollars to sweep into capital projects. Last year we had, how much did you say? How many thousand, hundred thousand dollars?
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand.
Thought we had planned on two hundred thou, two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, but how?
This is in a table on page seventy, I think. I, it would help me a lot to actually get to specifics in the budget instead of. I mean, so I, so I actually can close the loop on it.
Capital projects revenue table.
Yeah. So capital project revenue.
Yeah.
Seventy. So, so we're talking revenue and it's the appropriated fund balance.
So, well, forty five, thirty eight to seven hundred. That is the revenue that comes out of the general fund into the capital projects and it comes out of ten. And it's how, it's the number really I use to balance the budget. We budget expenses and revenues to be equal. And so we do mostly do all of our, uh, nitty gritty number, really try to detail and, you know, buffer where we want, put our numbers in. And then there's all, there's usually money left. Like whatever that number is, is what it, we get plugged into this line on page.
In the appropriated fund balances, you mean?
Ten fifty, uh, nine, ten. So look at page forty four. Is the nonparticular expense in the general fund that moves money from the general fund to the capital project. The line is ten fifty nine, ten. And you can see that, you know, last year the budget was two hundred and eighty seven. And this year the number, the added number is pretty flawless to that.
What, what page?
If.
Forty four. And the, the account number is?
Ten fifty.
Nine, ten.
Nine, ten.
Okay, right.
Okay. So this year I'm saying it's actually a little less. I'm, I'm saying we're only going to have about two hundred and seventeen.
Right.
But then we're going to go hopefully bring in more money than we expected and we're going to spend less than we expected and probably who knows where that will fall out next year.
Yeah, but last year. Yeah, but last year, we probably had the same philosophy in the actual, in the budget we're exactly on. We didn't bring in more than we budgeted.
No, this two eighty-seven has not happened yet. It's, 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 um.
So is that going to be bigger?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that, no, that's.
That'll be about a million.
Bigger, which goes back to uh, last night in that training. She said it comes down to a council action to move money from the general fund to the capital projects.
Right.
And when we bring this back second reading, we're going to be as close as we can and that number's going to be a lot bigger. It's going to be closer to the.
For last year.
For last year. And then you, when we adopt, you know.
Yep, we make adjustments.
We make, basically we're accepting last year's budget here and we're, this is next year's proposed.
Right.
So you actually amend this budget at the same time you approve next year's budget.
Um, okay, along the same vein, can, can you explain, so on, you don't have to turn to these right away, but on pages eighty-five, which is the sewer revenue and ninety-six. There's two lines that one says appropriated fund balance. So for this next year, there's like a seventy-two percent change in the appropriated fund balance. That's fifty-two, thirty-eight, six oh one. So page eighty-five. So we're looking at sewer revenue here. Steve. It's up to you. So that third line down fifty-two, thirty-eight, six oh one. So budgeted this year was two hundred and nine thousand for next year, three hundred and sixty and a half thousand. And the same thing in the park impact fees, why is this such a huge change?
Each fund has a balance and you balance it on what you expect to come in that you, so pretend you have this bottom line that is your fund, okay? And then you set that to the side and then you look at in your fund sewer, water, uh, water impact, sewer impact, streets, street impact. They're, they're all different funds, class C, capital projects, general fund, you have to look at each one. And each one has this list of revenues that comes in, okay? And then you take that, whatever you project or whatever you think you're going to get for revenue, you plug those numbers in and you do your best. And then you plug in your expenses and what happens is rarely are they ever equal. There's always a little more expense or a little less expense, a lot more expense. And so you have to balance it and you balance it by taking money out of the pot. So you just focus on income and expenses that you project. And then to balance it, you either take out of your pot and put money in and pull out of your savings basically, and that is appropriating. So you, anytime you appropriate, you're pulling money out of your savings to pay for all the things that you're saying you want to pay for in this budget. Now there, and the opposite of that is if you're bringing more revenue in, then you have an actual line that expenses and says. We're paying the reserves and it's going from this list of revenues and expenses, it's going out of there and it's going to the pot. So appropriating and uh, reserves, so every time, at, at the end of every fund, we're going to see that beginning cash balance. And then you're going to see either a reserve or appropriation, appropriations are negative or in parentheses, and they give you an ending cash balance.
Mm hmm.
So anywhere you see, so if we look at a. Beginning of the document, this is one of the GFOA requirements. You have in the page where all of the funds are listed and. On page sixteen, you can see all those appropriations and the reason for the appropriations.
Um, seventeen.
Long range financial plans.
Yeah, uh, no. No, so the fund balances. If on page sixteen.
Bottom of sixteen.
Bottom of sixteen. Yeah, that chart right there says this is how much is being pulled out of savings and for what reason. So you should, what you want to see, it is whenever you're appropriating money, you want that to be for one-time expenses, right? You should never appropriate money or pull money out of your savings to pay for ongoing expenses like salaries or equipment or these things. It's, it's projects, it's, you know, payoff of building, uh, buy a, a, a large piece of equipment. It's those kind of extra things that are, you pull out of your savings account to, to cover those expenses. So, so you can see there on uh, obviously we are appropriating a quite, quite a bit of money. But a lot of that is because, and the change really is from year to year as the projects change and as uh, we receive more grant money. So, cause I mean, we were, if you look at that first line, uh, we're the capital, the capital projects, we are appropriating the uh. Uh, we're appropriating out of our savings.
Eight hundred thousand. That. That is the number in, on page seventy. So the, the final budget that's being proposed for twenty-four, twenty-five says we're going to pull seven hundred and seventy-eight. Thousand nine hundred dollars out of the general fund balance. And that's what the sixteen says as well. Capital project.
The capital project is a separate fund from the general.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, sorry, but the seventeen thing is the value of pipes and everything else, right? Assets and liabilities. The chart on page seventeen.
Uh, the chart on page seventeen is the long range, go to that.
Assets, liabilities, but, but fund equity is like the value of, the total value of pipes and everything else. From the assets, right?
Correct, and Dave Sanderson is the one that kind of keeps all track of all that, calculates all those for us.
So did we have the chart on page sixteen last year?
Yes.
Yeah. Seems like I haven't, maybe it was last year it was new and the year before it wasn't there, I don't know, but.
I think last year.
I think last year was the first time.
Last year was.
Yeah, it's a great chart.
Yeah.
Because I think as Justin said, the budget's more like cash flow. Right? We have income and we have expenses and it's kind of like the checking account, but the question is, but what's in the savings account? How long can we keep pulling money out of the savings account before we've appropriated everything out of that savings account? And then there's no, there's nothing left for, for, for future, yeah.
Yeah, so I wonder, uh, what you have. Might be better to move that closer. Well, no, it says right there, it says the beginning balance, the not appropriated beginning balance.
Yeah.
And those ending balances, sorry, it's, it's, there are a few places, you know.
Yes.
But the reason it's in a few places, that's.
So GFOA made us put that in. I thought I made us put that in. We'll get.
You can say you did, you said, let's get GFOA.
All right, that was one. That's fair, I don't, I don't care, I don't care. It's not about who's right, about being right.
Can I, okay, so one question about appropriations. So like on storm water department fund on page sixteen, so we got a beginning balance of almost a hundred, four hundred thousand appropriating ninety thousand.
Um.
For new street sweeper, um, but this.
Wait, what fund are you on?
The storm water department, is it, so this, is the street sweeper costing ninety thousand? I thought it cost a hundred and ninety thousand.
Just appropriate. So much we have to pull out of savings.
To cover. Okay.
Mine says a hundred and ten thousand on the appropriation, so does that one.
When did yours get printed?
It must've been printed at a different time.
I think you got a newer version.
Yeah, I think ours.
In print.
Ours was printed two weeks ago.
Facilitation is the answer.
Yeah. Okay, all right, sorry, I think my mind's wrapping around appropriations now.
It takes a second.
I feel like this would be really more helpful if you had a whiteboard.
Well, I did a monopoly, that's why, did it make sense when I did a monopoly? Yeah, I had to do this to like the whole staff or at least a bunch of.
Where's the monopoly money tonight?
But I should have. It's, it was, it's not, it took me a while, it was a wrap, I was headed around.
Yeah. Yeah.
Here's a number change. Yeah, I haven't changed like the expenses of the product. I think the only ones that we can talk about change other than just how much we've spent this year to date was a hundred thousand dollar grant. Everything else should be.
Yeah. I, I have a couple of other questions, but they're unrelated to appropriations. So if we want to finish this topic, we can, and then I have a few other questions.
Go ahead, you got the floor.
Okay, excellent, let's dive right in, page twenty-three. Um, I, I just didn't remember hearing this before. Um, on overall expenditures, we're looking at the water impact fee expenses. And it says the reason for the change is the Mount Vista Railroad bore cost. And I just don't, I'd never heard, what is the Mount Vista Railroad bore?
Mount Vista, oh, exactly. When we repaid thirty-two hundred south, there was two water lines that were underneath thirty-two hundred. One of them was a really old eight-inch class pipe that was causing us leaks and problems and issues. So we wanted to abandon that pipe. To abandon that pipe, we had to make up east-west capacity in the system somewhere else. So we worked with Mount Vista to upsize the line through Mount Vista. Then we also, as a side note, worked with uh, Nibley Meadows, upsize through Nibley Meadows to make up for that capacity. And so we have a gap there, um, that development will help fill in and then you have Scott Farm subdivision. But we've got to get under the railroad tracks connected to Mount Vista. And so the bore is to connect the line, the east-west line we upsize in Mount Vista to connect to the main artery, if you will, in six forty. So we got four hundred tracks. That's what that project is and I apologize if I failed to bring that up.
All right, that's just going to happen this year. Cool.
We would like to, we get the money. Budget is going to happen after that.
Okay, great. Um, on page twenty-eight, I had a question on something I didn't understand. It's the general fund revenue taxes. In that graph, or not graph, in that, what's this called?
Table.
Table, thank you.
Mm hmm.
There's two lines, natural gas franchise taxes and cable franchise taxes. Can you tell me what those are?
Franchise, we just signed a franchise agreement for your member telecom that allow a private utility to come in and.
Right.
Public, uh, eat, uh, right away to install the utility and provide service.
Yeah.
So to do that, we have to create agreements to say you're going to actually pay us. So if you go look on your natural gas bill, you, there's an actual line of taxes that goes to Nibley for the use of the public right away. So that's what those are for the, the telecom is like any big communications. Uh, and we want in the all west one, we just did, we made sure, hey, you're going to pay the same franchise tax everybody else is. And so it's all west, Comcast, uh.
Google Fiber.
Uh, Google Fiber, you know, pay it with and when Google Fiber comes, we'll make sure that's in there.
Yeah.
Um, so uh, that's, that's what those taxes are.
All west hasn't begun installing infrastructure, have they?
They have, they have.
So they're not paying us yet? Okay, okay, that makes sense.
It's like, it, sales tax is like a sales and use tax. It's like a sales and use tax on utilities. We don't pay sales tax for natural gas straight up, but in fact, we do in the form of a franchise tax. Consumers pay for sales tax on natural gas.
Yeah.
And it goes in part to the city.
So on the, on the income, can that go in the general fund or is it, has to be specifically, um, in a specifically slot spent on that one?
Into the general.
Yeah, okay.
Revenue goes into the general fund, just like sales tax. And then pays for the general fund expenses.
Okay.
So we don't use those, that money for water, sewer, those same, just general fund stuff. General fund stuff is streets, parks, admin, planning department, recreation.
And they're not our enterprise funds, right? They're not our gas lines, they're not our gas service. Somebody else's, so they don't go into a separate.
Yeah.
A utility fund.
I just didn't know if it's specifically signed as a tax for that, if it had to be in that, like your water.
We like it to go in the general fund, right? Cause that's where we have the most flexibility. We can move it into capital projects, we can do other stuff. We, it's easy to move stuff from the general fund to other funds, but it's more difficult to move like from the water fund into the general fund. Cause you're not supposed to be making the water payers pay the general fund to build parks.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, uh, my next question is on page forty-four. It's a non-departmental budget. Um, there is a bank charges account, it's ten fifty-four forty. And that's jumping up from twenty-one thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars. So is that just the bank is now charging us more? What's going on there?
Do a new software that was, um, that Civic Review software for our planning and building. And we found it to be such a great program that we found a lot of other uses for it. And so slowly over time, we moved our, our software use from Casell over to Civic Review. And the only catch with that is that it means that Express Bill Pay is processing all online payments, which they are currently a facilitator for Civic Review software. And so, um, each time somebody pays for, and then, so over time we moved business licensing to Civic Review. And then we moved stock licensing because we were so successful. And then we started putting our utility service agreements on there and, and other forms that we use regularly for the city, um, just because it was so convenient. Um, the only catch is anytime that somebody pays through them, we have, uh, we have to cover a certain service charge. And this, uh, and the service charge just is, uh, um, it depends on the way that they pay, whether it's a debit or a credit card. But it, it ranges from, I would say thirty-nine cents to about seventy-five cents per transaction. And so that is essentially what, um, what has increased from, so when it's talking about banking fees, it's mostly those fees to Express Bill Pay, which is.
And rather than passing along that expense to our residents, we're just eating that cost?
Um, not, no, not necessarily. So, um, we're, we're eating part of the cost for the debit transaction, but, um, we actually do have a credit card servicing fee that we added. Anytime somebody utilizes a credit card, uh, and so the revenue has also gone up, is, is how I should phrase that. So, um, on the revenue side.
Okay.
It's covered, it's covered primarily by the applicant or, or, you know, the, for the, the person, yeah, putting, bringing the application. If they pay with a credit card, there's the, the, the gentleman there's.
They, when I look at the monthly invoice from Express Bill Pay, it looks like they're charging just a very minimal fee, um, if it's coming out through their.
Checking account.
So it, it pays for some of that.
Okay.
But we do need to keep that in mind as we're calculating fees and we're, you know, moving these kinds of things. We need to understand that, you know, if we want that convenience, there is a fee and, you know, we have to make sure it's covered in the fee or accept that. We're going to subsidize it out of the general fund.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I feel like our fees are pretty well, I mean, we feel like the revenue's being covered to cover this, the, the convenience fee of these transactions.
Yeah. That makes sense.
And do you think, so it's sixty-seven percent jump, it's fourteen thousand dollars. Do you think we gain fourteen thousand dollars worth of efficiency?
I do.
That's, that's, thanks.
And a lot of that fourteen thousand isn't covered by the city.
By the city, right.
Whoever's paying. And we don't, I, I don't know, I have gotten complaints on, on the fees. Yeah.
Just pay them.
And more and more people recognize that also paying, you start utility fee, fee, you know, utility bills from saving Express Bill Pay.
That's correct.
You know, more and more people were, you know, doing that rather than coming in, wanting to check or.
Or sending a check through the mail.
Yes, so I have been tracking the number of online pays and we hit about sixteen hundred when I first was working, when I first started working here three years ago, and now we're up over twenty-one hundred a month. So it's, it's just more people moving to paying online, and so it just costs more.
Paying online is nice because a lot of them would do it the automatic.
Yeah.
So we're not just getting, and then you have to contact them, plug them, put out bill hangers before they come in and pay us. So we think it's a good, it's a good thing.
But they don't get a hard copy of the newsletter.
No, no, no.
You still do. It comes with your utility bill.
I don't get a utility bill.
Oh, I guess if you opted out of it.
Automatically gets paid from my bank.
But do you still get your utility bill via email then? From the city?
I can go look it up, but.
I get a monthly, I get a monthly notice from Express Bill.
I, I can go look it up, but no, it doesn't come email automatically. I get a notice from the bill pay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you can. That's, we, we use the Express Bill Pay, but we still get the newsletter and utility bill.
Hard copy.
In hard copy, yeah.
Yep. Well, that's expensive.
Okay. Alright, moving on, I have one, you probably have already changed this, but page forty-seven.
No.
No, not yours. No. In the streets department, under the twenty-twenty-four and twenty-five department goals, the top two bullet points are, I think, things they already accomplished. They need to be moved up. One block to the accomplishments. Okay. And in, on page fifty-two, this is planning and building. Now, I understand that we've hired a part-time code enforcement officer. So I'm just wondering, so why did the budget for code enforcement, is it because we moved that code enforcement officer out of planning and building and they're being paid out of a different fund now? Is that why that's gone down eighty percent?
Looked out, I'm going to pause. Had to split.
Oh.
We had anticipated helping Austin build inspection and public works inspections, but as it gone over a year and a half now, so we really just kind of was keying in on public works. Uh, we're keeping busy with public works. We're talking about we need to add some more responsibility potentially to that. So we moved Tyler out of, uh, planning and building into straight public works.
So there's a.
Also, we moved there what used to be, uh, you know, that twenty-five thousand dollars was code enforcement. Uh, kind of, we originally had thought about maybe trying to just have a third-party consultant type contract with somebody, but we just since decided to just bring that in house. So that, that's why that went way down and it got moved to salaries.
So why is there still five thousand dollars in there?
Uh, just in case we have to do mailing, so just randomly, he might need a camera to, uh, so he's not using his phone to take pictures of violations and things like that. So they're just, we're just, we're just new and not really sure, so we left a little money in there for incidental alternatives.
Okay.
So it didn't have anything to do with building inspections in Tyler? It was all about code enforcement, right?
The salaries and wages.
Okay.
It was affected by both.
So it went down a bunch because Tyler moved out, then went up, or was it because we moved the code enforcement into that one?
Okay.
So our code enforcement guy is getting paid in salaries and wages on building and planning, or is that in a different department?
No, building and planning.
Alright.
Yeah, because salaries and wages also went down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where.
Yes, so how are we paying it out of salaries if the salaries have gone down?
Because, because Tyler's, half, half of Tyler's salary is.
I see. So it went down and then came back up a little.
Alright.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Um, on the same page, I had another question. Professional services, which is ten sixty-eight, three-ten. Um, so we are paying, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. I didn't mean to.
Same page.
Yeah, same page. We're looking at the professional services line, which is ten sixty-eight, three-ten. So we're paying thirty thousand dollars for a grant writer. Is that one specific grant we've paid for them? Or is this just like over the course of the year, we're paying them that much to help with a variety of grant writing projects?
For whoever, whatever grants, others see and want to go after and ask them to help. Really, we haven't spent any near that much money.
Are we paying them on a per-project basis?
We pay. Guy that helps give the land water conservation one point two. When something, and so that one, pay that guy now.
Oh, yeah. Is thirty thousand dollars like, uh, necessary? That's a lot of money. How much did we pay this person for the two grants that they did achieve for us? That just seems like a lot of money to keep in reserve when none of, only two of our grants out of the plethora that we got this year came from a grant writer. Yeah.
Well, we, we talked about getting a part-time person to do, pushing more.
Let's say the ROI looks pretty good.
Yeah, that's, that's why we said a lot in there, because.
You want to push, you know, harder, then could.
Yeah.
Another thing that, you know, I feel is exactly the same vein, but Chad and I had a lot of discussions about hiring someone to come in and try to help find funding, big money for the potential, whatever the indoor, indoor feasibility comes back to something. And that will probably, we talked about when the right time was for that person, and we decided, you know, probably in the middle-ish of when this kind of study's going on, if we find the right fit, maybe pull the trigger on that and, and using some of that money. And that can be, uh, paid, uh, you know, a couple ways they could. Some pay, you know, it's a percentage of whatever they bring in. Um, some of them are a flat fee, you know, that's a little unsure for me, the way you go waters yet. So we talked about using some of that money for that as well. So we can maybe clear that off and search and all of that.
Okay, that makes sense, and that seems like it'd be a good use for that money. Thirty thousand dollars just seems like a lot to have just floating around when we're only, when we only paid somebody twenty-five hundred dollars or whatever to help.
The first, the first year we put him in, because we thought it was a half, half part-time job.
Yeah.
I think it was about three or four years.
No, how am I saying we pay him?
That's three or four what?
How many hours?
Oh, yeah.
I might guess a hundred and five.
Yeah. I mean, if it's more than five, I'll go into that industry. That seems like a pretty good return.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think the thing to look at if you're considering going into it is the hourly rate. Is it worth?
That's what I mean. How many, how many hours did this person put in?
But on the other hand, I mean, he brought us two million dollars.
Yeah.
So we might have been able to get two million without him. We might have been able to get two million with less expense. We might. But I'm gonna, I think I'd probably push back a little bit if we don't have money sitting there. When an opportunity crops up and you say, hey, we just heard about this grant, or we just heard about this thing we could go apply for, but we're gonna need some help with the hoops we might have to jump through to make the application. If we don't have money in there, we can't, we can't go spend that money.
Yeah, I understand the justification, and maybe like, like Justin said, maybe what I'm looking for is more clarification about what that money's gonna be used for. Maybe we could put like a little more description about like this thirty thousand dollars for a grant writer or someone who may be searching for money for other opportunities like an indoor recreation center. I mean, I guess that's kind of pedantic, but. Okay. Okay, so maybe that's all I'm looking for then. Dorm water, yeah. Oh, the tank.
Grant just popped, we gotta move now. We had some money budgets in the project, but probably they already did a whole bunch of work on the dorm grant, and then like just popped up and were like, yeah, he's got to do that. So it wasn't like a ton of money. But I mean, he's right, there are times when opportunities pop, but we got off on.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That makes sense, thank you. That's all. Yeah, so you really have to have somebody almost like on retainer or ready to work for you at a moment's notice.
That also, it's not like it's only getting easier, like individual consulting with city.
Cool. Okay. My next question you answered for me yesterday, we were talking about.
It's in the.
Um, we talked about libraries yesterday, so you already, and we also talked about community reinvestment agency. So you answered my questions there. I think that might be it. We got through them, guys. Thank you for indulging me. Yeah, that's all my questions.
Bringing up the pass-through tax for the CVTD.
No, I was waiting, I was gonna let you do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get more money than the county does.
Where is that, Norm? Where is that? The pass-through tax? I'm just not pulling it up well.
Was it twenty, page twenty-three?
About that. On the second, what happens? I have asked and asked and asked, and I don't see it, I don't see it, I don't see it, but then in the end, it's like.
Alright, I can, I can explain. So I just reached out to Dave just yesterday about our, I asked what he expected thing, installment of, of those terms, and they actually just gave us two distributions, one of them. So he will report them later.
And then both get them and we give them.
Yes, that's correct.
The CVTD guy doesn't even know anything about it, so I.
It's on twen-, it's twenty-eight, it's line item, ten thirty-one, one sixty. But just the percentage, if you go to their fancy graph, um, the nice graph, it's a percentage.
Oh, yeah, from ninety to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Uh-huh, and it's three, three percent.
Sixty-seven percent.
You should reach out, because when, when the county expanded that, they gave them, they had a run of, of they're gonna up the sales tax, which they got this, and they, the county recommended that the percentage of that helps be a gap for like all of our, our, not just transportation, but your bike lanes and to widen it out, to put a bus stop lane. The money was supposed to be slaughtered for this, and every time I'm asking if it's available, and they think it did, but they said they need their money for their parking garage. But it, it was supposed to have been set aside for that.
I have a better understanding of that than I'm actually. That is, that has thrown my side for a long time.
Hopefully we can hold it.
And it, it might, it might not go to CVTD. I don't know.
So I have, I have a list that I'm happy to just talk to you about. It's up to the council if you want me to go through a similar list with you, or just give it to Justin and we'll highlight changes.
Give us your, give us your top three.
I don't know. It's in, it's in chronological.
Oh, okay.
We will document any changes from here on out, anything that changes in.
Okay.
And, and it's, it's probably only five or so.
Just go.
Okay. I, I, before I do that, I think that we shouldn't lose sight on the decision that we have to, that you all have to make tonight. And that is, are we, is there a chance that we're gonna go through a truth in taxation and go higher than the certified tax rate? Because if there is, Justin's got to report that. And we have, we, we, you can change your mind away from that, but you can't say, no, we're not gonna do truth in taxation and then decide to do it later. Correct?
Correct.
So that's, that's more important than what's on my list.
So are you comfortable having the discussions we're having without a motion still then? Because I think that it informs that decision a little bit.
Okay, I'm happy to have a motion anytime someone will give me one. Okay, I mean. If you're gonna give me a motion.
I'm not. Okay. I want you to go through your list.
I want to hear the list too.
Alright, I'll be, I think I can be quick. Although it's just dog-eared pages at this point, so. The density isn't very big, but the number of pages are. I think we covered it on page twenty-one. I was trying to figure out what happened to the hundred and ten thousand for safe routes to school, but you anticipated that we would not seek that grant revenue, correct? Okay, um, two lines above that, Firefly Development. We expected seventy-eight thousand on RAP's tax. We haven't received any. Is that because it'll come in later?
Um, that seventy-eight thousand dollars is part of the discussion, same discussion as the feasibility study. And when they approve that, uh, we'll get that money, and I think obviously get a straight answer. We asked for it, we asked for it.
We've been pursuing it since January.
And, uh, there's this official process and there's a timeline, and we think we're not gonna get it this fiscal year, so we expect to have it very shortly.
Okay. Have we, I mean, we've been doing this for about five years. Have we always got it for the first four years eventually?
It's been more than that, but yes, we, there was actually a couple of years that were missed, and we had to do the reconciliation. We got a bunch of money, but this is the last year we should get that seventy-eight thousand dollars. That seventy-eight thousand dollars is repayment for, uh, the development and purchase of Firefly Bus Stop. From the entry into that, we got followed for a certain amount, that seventy-eight thousand dollars, protecting under years with also the problems that we would go ask RAP's committee for anything else. But we have not, since I've been newly asked for RAP's tax, uh, application grant, so that was my.
And we need to chase it, because they fund things that we have better projects than what they fund. And I'm not counting the feasibility study. I'm, I'm counting other things and money they don't spend. And so we need to get serious about RAP's tax. Maybe we could get a grant writer to help us with that.
I'm fine with that. I just want to be clear about what this money is being used for. It's a lot of money to be sitting around, not being used.
I'm with you. Um, page twenty-four, actually, I think this is, actually relates to the one-six-hundredth number. Um, I think it's, even though I've said it and repeated it from previous city managers, that one-six-hundredth is historically about what it takes to run the city. That's an incomplete statement. One-six-hundredth is about what it takes to run the city and to continue building capital projects. It's far, I mean, look at how much we spend on capital projects compared to the general fund expenses, right? We're, we're thirty-nine percent on capital, thirty-six percent on capital projects and, uh, of, of the overall revenues, and only twenty-three percent of those expenses come out of the general fund. So that's to buy property for parks, that's to, that's to do a bunch of stuff, but it's, goes beyond running the city. Okay, that's just a note. Uh, page thirty. Line ten thirty-four, six-eight-one, I think the last column just has a Excel error in it, because it was a thousand dollars last year and a thousand dollars this year, and it shows a hundred percent increase. Yeah. Page thirty three. So. We got eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in interest. This is ten thirty six, six, ten. And we think we're gonna get forty five thousand dollars in interest next year.
Good. Great one. All the interest that we have received year to date is in that line. And at the end of the year, um, Dave takes it and distributes that eight hundred thousand dollars into all the capital projects, water, sewer, whatever. So that line, that's gonna drop.
That's overstated.
Yes, that's part of that one slide I was showing.
Okay.
Earlier about trying to figure out where the beginning balance and how much to move the capital projects because that number hadn't.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. What I did this year just for, so you know, exactly the question about you guys. I, I have a sheet now, you know, just dedicated to interest. And I conservatively have estimated that we're gonna bring in about four hundred thousand dollars in interest next year. I think that's a little low.
Yeah, I mean, interest rates are about the same as last year, right? So we should get about eight hundred thousand. Oh, yeah. They're being conservative. We're, we're saving without savings. All right, let's see. Uh, page. We, if we're spending money, we won't get the same amount of interest if, if we don't have as much in the bank. So I'm with you. Fair enough. Page fifty. The text on ten sixty two, three twenty refuse collection services.
Page did you say?
Page fifty. We need to update the green waste fee in the text. Yep, no worries. Six fifty two, we talked about on code enforcement. Thank you very much, Aaron, for helping me through that. See, you covered a bunch of these, so that's great. It's not that, uh. Yeah, close to the end. Yeah, again, on safe routes to school, that's page seventy. So capital projects revenue is short by a hundred and ten thousand. We know why. Page seventy three. Forty five, forty seven, forty six, active transportation. So there's a hundred and sixty five thousand for sidewalk and trail segments. Is the hundred and ten thousand for the missing link part of that one sixty five? Excellent. Yep, thank you. That's perfect.
Uh, while you're on seventy three, I'll just ask one of mine.
Yeah, yes, please.
The text for the master plans talks about doing the master plan again. I don't know if you wanna change that. Yeah, seven thirty seven.
Since you were on that page. Um, thank you. I'm done. Appreciate that. And I reserve the right to look over it again. Good job, you guys. Really well done. Nathan, do you have a list?
No, my list's been exhausted between you and Aaron.
No, we're the ones that are exhausted.
But I will make a motion for you.
Please.
Make a motion to adopt the budget as is, which if I believe or verify, is adopting which rate?
Certified.
Adopting the certified rate for first reading.
Okay, a second, a motion from Nathan and a second from Kay. Let's talk.
So in, in the equation, is there a balance of new growth, sales tax? You know, to help balance out the property tax? You know, in making sure you always have enough money without having to raise property taxes? I mean, what is that equation? How much of each thing do you have to have in order to find that balance? I know we talked about that last meeting that, you know, if we.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's an equation. At least if, if it's what I thought we talked about. And I think there is a relationship, but I don't know what the math looks like. I think we should work on that. Let's rightly or wrongly say that one six hundredth is the right amount of property tax when, number one, we're only receiving population sales tax. And number two, when we're only receiving uh, residential property tax. So now as we become a more diversified city instead of a bedroom community to Logan, those other two tax revenues increase. Point of sale, sales tax and commercial uh, property tax. But I don't know, I don't know what that equation is. My, my, my intuition says there, there is a number. Those are all related to one another, right? Based on numbers that, inputs that we can put our hands on, like what percent of the, uh, what's the ratio of point of sale, sales tax to population sales tax, right? That's an input to that maybe empirical equation. I don't know what the equation is, but I think that's an input. Another input is uh, what, what is the ratio of commercial sales tax, which is fully taxed at its assessed value versus residential, which is only fifty five of its assessed value. So that's another number. Or pair of numbers that would be an input to that relationship. And then we could say, well, one six hundredth, maybe it is the right number, but we don't need that anymore because we are now getting closer to a, we're, we're more diversified and closer to a complete city.
Well, that one six definitely, you know, on a normal, you know, when we were averaging a four percent increase in a year, I could see having something like that with COVID. I mean, we've had an, I mean, it's sixty two percent increase since two thousand nineteen. And so the property values have gone up so high that, I mean, what's the relationship between that and? I mean, in my mind, if the property values have come up that high, I mean, shouldn't we be collecting even more money? Based on that? And if we are, then I'm, I'm just trying to understand. Although I'm still wrapping my head around all of it.
Yeah, so I'll throw out, I think, before the fifth time plug for that webinar video, it really kind of simply lays that out about how if the value of property goes up, what does that mean? Just puts it real simple. Uh, here's a small town. It's got four houses and each house is like this.
Oh, yeah, that's one with the gal that taught at the, in St. George, the class.
No, this is a different one. Yeah, he said, he emailed it. It's, it's a guy explaining it and it's, yeah.
And, and.
Want to go back and look at that.
But that'll answer some of those questions about the relationship of how the property value goes up. Doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna bring in more revenue. Because it's all based on the amount of revenue, not the value. But it also lays out there why it might be in your best interest to occasionally raise taxes either every year a little bit or every few years a little bit more as opposed to just letting it drag, 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 drag and bang, gotta raise it quite a bit.
Yeah. Providence had to do that.
I think policy discussion, questions that you guys need to have, ask and have in your own minds. There, I, some of that, I don't think there's a real formula.
It's a beast.
Yeah, in that video, the guy explaining said the town he worked for didn't raise their taxes for thirty eight years. And then they had to do a very large tax increase. So.
Providence had to do one too.
Again, you know, reaching back in my memory of, um, when we were doing the whole, holding the one six hundredth over the certified tax rate. Off of memory, average home was paying, you know, thirty dollars more than they did the last year, thirty to fifty. And then, but you know, but then you realize that the next year, they're paying thirty more dollars than last year, which was sixty dollars more than two years ago, if that makes sense. And so, you know, we, there are some people that that has an impact on. And they come and they discuss why that impacts them and why you should or shouldn't do it. Um, so.
Yeah, I had that discussion with the county assessor when my property taxes were a thousand dollars in one year.
And that's the other thing is it's, it's really kinda crazy on how, who pays the increased, uh, cause your property values changed.
Yeah, and they hadn't assessed it for four years and so they increased it.
Honestly, who pays the bigger chunk each year is who got, whose property value changed. Some people don't change much. Some people get changed more and it's those people that are kinda penalized. But then next year, it's not them potentially. It's somebody else that might have to pay. In their theory is in the end, it's the most equal way to do it.
To him, the assessor said that when they did it, they were assessing homes built between two thousand fifteen and nineteen. And I built in two thousand sixteen, so I got reevaluated. So instead of the average adjustment, I mean, they, they increased it substantially.
So they are, help me here, Larry, if you can, you're busy, but it seems like we had this discussion and this, these, there was a theory or rumor floating around that the assessor's office was required to do that every so many years. And in fact, the assessor is required to assign a new value.
Every year.
Single.
Every year, yeah.
But there is some extra about how they, they do, they do do deeper dives on a regular schedule-ish.
Yeah.
And so luck of the draw.
Yeah.
On what that schedule is.
If I remember correctly, they have like a ten percent margin of error that's considered acceptable. And so that factors into things as well, unless that has changed. I know when I've had my property reevaluated over the years, um, that they are allowed that ten percent margin of error, which isn't as big an error if you are lucky enough to have a three hundred thousand dollar home versus a seven hundred thousand dollar home. You know, that, that makes a, a big difference and.
I'll have to ask you about that. I don't think I've ever heard that one.
Yeah, that, well, I mean, the, we're going back to two thousand and eight. Uh, nope, two thousand and six, when I had that discussion that that they were allowed to have that that margin of error. And it typically works out within eight years. It's settled. I, it, it didn't make a huge big difference, but it can take, it can make a difference certain years.
So here's here's. I could try to show you this graph. Maybe I'll just describe it. It asks, have we really maintained the one six hundredth historically? And I mean, the answer is no. So going back to uh, the change from twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen, without getting too sidetracked, that was a case where ignoring new growth, property values actually decreased. And so the certified rate didn't change because they don't lower the rate, even if property values decreased. But the council in twenty fourteen decreased the property tax rate below the certified rate because ignoring new growth, property taxes went down by about two percent. So we said on principle, we'll lower property taxes. Twenty fifteen, the, uh, increase in property value went up by about one percent. And the certified tax rate then would go down by one percent. Because you need to collect the same amount of money, right? And the council said, for one percent, we're not gonna deal with the truth in taxation process. We'll give up on the one six hundredth. All right? It was also similar in twenty sixteen when relative to twenty fifteen, the property values went up by about three percent. The council said, yeah, well, three percent, let's not worry about it. So now relative to the one six hundredth value, the certified rate has decreased by four percent. One percent in twenty fifteen, about three percent in twenty fifteen. And then in twenty seventeen, the, the council caught up to the one six hundredth rate. And the property value increased by a certain amount, but the count, the, the council adopted the one six hundredth rate, which means the adopted property tax was up by about four percent compared to the certified rate to catch up for the years that, that we didn't do that now. You all were here and, and then from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, the council has stuck with the one six hundredth rate. And there were some substantial increases. Twenty twenty, there was a twenty percent increase in property values. Which would mean that the certified rate would be twenty percent less than it was the year before, with one, twenty percent less than one six hundred. But the council said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna stick with the one six hundredth, right? Now, you all remember the big, big year in twenty twenty three when property values, this is all ignoring new growth. I've taken new growth out of all of these numbers, but property values went up by almost thirty percent. Assessed value of, of property. And so that would have been to go with the certified rate, that would be a re, a reduction of thirty percent in the tax rate. But, but the council said, well, we, we're not gonna go with certified rate, but we're also not gonna increase people's property taxes by twenty five percent. The value went up by that, but we'll go with less of a rate. So instead, that's when you as a council went with fifteen percent instead of thirty percent. Fifteen percent increase in the tax rate instead of thirty percent increase that would match the increase in property value. Right? So now relative to the one six hundredth, we're behind by about fifteen percent of that point oh oh one six six six, right? Last year, it wasn't worth the trouble to make the change. I think it was about one percent. Council stuck with what we had the year before. And so we're, we're kind of in the same situation, I think, as we were in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. You know, we're talking about one percent last year. Is it worth the trouble to get one percent more? And then, no, in twenty sixteen, the answer was nah, for three percent, it's not worth the trouble. We're about four percent right here, right? So yeah, it's like, eh, to me, historically, historically, it hasn't always been one six hundredth. It's been, eh, is it worth it? Is it worth the trouble? We decided in twenty fifteen, it wasn't worth the trouble. We decided in twenty sixteen, it wasn't worth the trouble. One percent, three percent. Now we're one percent and four percent. Is it worth the trouble? That's the question. But if it's not worth the trouble at some point, maybe it's fifteen years from now. Maybe it's next year. Maybe it's whenever, whenever, whenever. I believe the council has to have the backbone to say, we gotta get we, we can't continue to have inflation undermine the operation of the city. And the question is, does property value represent the inflated costs of running the city and improving the city with capital projects? So at some point, you can't let inflation stop the city from doing the city's function. And then you go through truth and taxation. Does that help? Does it help you guys? Go ahead.
Yeah, so you talked percentages. Let's get an idea of numbers for a second, right? So property tax, if I'm wrong, is roughly thirty percent of the amount of taxes we bring in total. There's a general, to, to the general fund.
Yep.
Twenty seven. Nope, the one after it. Twenty eight.
Yep.
The little one on twenty eight shows the thirty seven percent of taxes. And so that thirty seven percent. And so that thirty-seven percent is fifty-nine, or, it's thirty-seven percent, but taxes itself is only fifty-nine percent of what we bring in to the general fund. Yes?
Right, that's.
Which would be the graph on the other side, twenty-eight.
Right.
How much money are we talking about?
Question.
You had that on a slide.
Yeah.
I just want to bring us back to the slide essentially. Cause the percentage talk is good, but I think also knowing like the worth it has to have a value.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Because we all know that truth and taxation is kind of a dumb process. Barry said it.
Yeah, so you can go two ways, you can show it's a dumb process by doing it every year and try to educate people.
Right.
Or you can say, why are we punishing ourselves?
Doing this to ourselves, yeah. Um, no.
That's the output.
Yeah.
So that's the numbers, I mean, if we go with the one three seven eight, then we bring in one million fifty thousand dollars in property tax. Which is forty thousand dollars more than last year.
But that's all from new growth, right? That's all from new growth.
Yeah, just trying to get numbers.
Right.
Dollars. So by adopting the certified tax rate, we bring in forty thousand dollars more. If we go with the one six hundredth, we bring in two hundred and twenty thousand dollars more into budget.
That's a perspective is a indoor recreation facility study. Right? That's the difference of what we would not get.
A hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, right? You're, you're saying that there are projects and things that we as a city have to expend on. And I know what my motion was, but I'm, I'm leaning more and more towards building that capital improvements fund, I think that it's important. There are other ways, I think, to compensate.
But I think the feasibility study is more like ninety thousand.
Yeah, well.
Not a hundred.
I'm just using as an example, because it's Cache County and what they just did.
They only did seventy. They're even worse.
But there are some significant projects, like sidewalks that we need to finish. Um, um, what I'd like to see us do is economic development, because that helps anything that we can invest in that reduces the need for property tax later, I am all for. Right? And so economic development of increasing sales tax, increasing commercial tax, that kind of stuff. I, I would love to see more of that. Um, my concern is though, I was all on board for this until I found out what the county's planning on doing, and that is, I think they're doing one of their significant jumps this year. Uh, which I know I shouldn't base everything on them, but to, it's just a bummer, what, if, if we get hit in all those areas, right? It's really hard for citizens, like you said, I think truth and taxation is good and that people come and they learn. But we're just a sliver compared to what property tax actually is collected to these other entities. And, um, if unfortunately, it's set up in that we are penalized by having to go through the process. But it's really not that big of a, a dent compared to what other entities will go after. Right? It's just like this race to see who taxes, who collects the taxes. And so being consistent, there is wisdom, even if it only is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the course of five years, that you keep increasing, that keeps safety there for our city. Cause there, there would be other ways we would have to go after that funding that may or may not be the right way, right? Bonding, et cetera, for projects that we really want done. So.
That being said, I mean, Justin reiterated tonight and said twelve months ago, like I build in little savings accounts everywhere, we are nowhere near spending all the money that we have that we could be spending, right? We have a lot of savings that we could be spending, so it's not as though we don't have money for these projects, we have the money. We anticipated spending, what was it, like sixty thousand dollars on a feasibility study, and we ended up spending ninety thousand dollars on a feasibility study, but it's not a problem, we can spend that because we have it. So I don't think that we're hurting for money by any means.
And it goes back to the question of should we be spending everything we collect? Right? How much, how much percentage should we be putting away? Is it ten? Is it thirty? Is it? What projects do we see coming up, right? Do we need a new sewer in the next ten years? Probably not, but other cities do, and they probably don't have the money for it.
That's why I asked about the equation, so is there areas we need to focus more on with economic development and others to help bring in additional revenue without having to raise property taxes? I mean, I, I mean, that's our only avenue, then that's what we have to do, but that's why I want to know.
A, a couple of things, when you're talking about what is the right amount for savings, I'm very comfortable going back to people in the community and saying, we set aside about ten percent savings to just, just be safe, and people seem to respond to that one, okay, that's a, a a data that I have experience with that, as far as talking to people about it, they're, they appreciate that we have something in reserve. And obviously, we ended up with more because the budget is such where we budget high for expenses and and, and low for in, income, and it, and it's worked out well in our favor. I had a question, um, that, that came to mind, Larry, as you were talking, do we have what the average certified tax rate is when you would count for the years that we didn't do the one sixteen? Like if we take all those numbers together and just say whatever you first started off with, like two thousand fifteen, if we put those together, do we know what that combination would, what the average certified tax rate would be for those things?
I can tell you the average certified tax rate since twenty thirteen is point zero zero one five.
That's good to know.
Average certified tax rate, so the number that the county reports to us to not bring in more money ignoring new growth, the average number all those years has been point zero zero one five.
And that includes the years when we've held ourselves to the one sixteen, and those few years where we've said we're just going with the certified tax rate.
Yeah, I have right in front of me since twenty thirteen, the certified rate that was given to us by the county since twenty thirteen, average them all out, point oh oh one five.
And that also includes the years where the council went below, wasn't there a year you said that they went below? There were two years that they, so that would include those years as well.
There was one year that went low and then two years.
Where they just stayed.
Didn't keep up with one six hundredth.
Was that before thirteen, though? What year did you say?
What years were those?
Yeah, do you remember?
Twenty
fifteen, I think you said, and sixteen and seventeen, they raised them.
See, the thing is though, see, the problem I think with looking at the average is that once the council says we're gonna go with one six hundredth as the tax rate, the next year, that is the certified tax rate.
Yep.
It's all cumulative, right? Yeah, it's, I mean, I think that's a good number to know and to see how it's, it's fluctuated, but once the count, and, and in fact, this goes to Diane Schaefer's point, the thing that she handed out of our last truth and taxation. It's not true explicitly, but she said this tax is permanent, it never goes away.
Yeah.
Once you set one six hundredth for one year, if property values don't change one iota from that year to the next year, the tax rate, the certified tax rate is one six hundredth.
Yeah. I was just kind of curious to see how close this year was to the overall average versus other years when and, and like you said, an average is, doesn't necessarily mean that's what we're shooting for, we are shooting for, I think we're shooting for what do we need so that we can keep the city functioning at a, at, at the level it is, is not just this year, but what do we need to set aside for future years as well, and the capital projects and like Nate mentioned, sewers, we don't have to worry too much about them right now, but someday the city will, and roads. Those are big expenses that we can't carry all right now. There, there's a reason that it's built out over time.
And the, the, I, I, they made a good point about in that training last night about public debt is different than.
Yeah.
Sometimes to keep this where it should be, to be fair, sometimes you just probably need to take on debt.
That, that has changed my attitude about one six hundredth. Cause I feel differently now than I did eight years ago about the difference between private debt and public debt. And hey, there's no way that we're gonna save up enough money to build an indoor rec center. There's just no way. I don't, I mean, unless we're not talking about one six hundredth. We're talking about a tenth.
Yeah.
And so the only way we're gonna build an indoor rec center is to go take out public debt. And then I say, well, now we're, you know, we've got big projects that we're gonna finance with debt. That helps determine what our rates are gonna be in the future, because we have to pay off the debt, but it becomes, you know, I mean, one of the things, if, if we don't go with the certified tax rate, what we need to do as a council, when we, when, when we have a truth in taxation hearing, people are gonna say, what are you gonna do with the money? Why do you need the money? And people are willing to give to specific projects. I don't think they buy it very well when we say, well, we're just gonna save it. Even though I think that's a great plan. Again, I think there's probably a difference between personal savings and public savings. Right?
Well, it's hard to justify more savings when we already have so much savings built into our budget. And every single line item.
Saying that.
In every single line item, you have budgeted savings.
I don't, I don't.
Well.
Not even, not even half, not even half a road for half a city block, we can't even afford it.
Just an anecdote, you're gonna see the park, parks master plan come forward pretty soon. They just did the financial anal, analysis, and it was basically, the message was we don't really have funding to do any, any of our hopes and dreams uh, unless we raise additional revenue. I mean, that's kind of the short of it.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, we see, you know, you know, five million dollars in the capital projects is looks good on a person's level, but five, five million dollars doesn't, doesn't build this public works facility that we're gonna need in the next five, I'm sure you want it now, but you know, we, you know, city hall staff is busting the seams, Chad would love to have a little home somewhere he could be, you know, it just, it just doesn't go as far as you think it does. So I hear, I hear what you're saying, that's sort of a little bit too, but there's really, when you start having to pay for things, that, that savings isn't a lot.
Yeah, it's an interesting concept to say, well, we're gonna bond for a indoor rec center, and we're gonna bond for a new public works, we're gonna bond for a a well, a tank, it's like, that's not gonna last for very long to keep putting referenda on the ballot.
If no other tax entities existed, I'd be okay with it.
Yeah.
Right?
If no other tax.
Yeah, if, if I didn't have to, if I didn't get the choice to choose all the other taxes that I'm paying, right? Cause people don't even hesitate to bond for new schools. Cause they know it's a need, and even though my kids may not go to that school, I'm still okay with building that school, right? But there's all this other stuff that will have to be paid for, that I don't have a say in, but at the city level, a bond for something we need is easier to stomach. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And it's a lot harder to, well, let's see, I think a council, county council member pointed out recreation is an option.
It's a choice.
It's a choice, right? Going to school is not a choice, you have to go to school.
You can choose your school.
Stay home and go to school, you can choose to go to different schools, but I think you truancy laws, you have to go to school.
I think it's important to have in the back of our head, the guess that property tax shouldn't be viewed as a revenue source for the city. Right? It is one, but it, we should look at things that will make us not rely on that as much, which is economic development.
Agreed completely, but what, what else do bedroom communities have? A little bit of, I mean, they have population sales tax. That's the problem, we need, I mean, that's the goal for, for us. We need to be a complete city, we need to have other tax revenue that we can count on. And goodness gracious, I mean, you know, both property tax and the population part of sales tax grow with population, right? And sales tax has been the leading contributor to the general fund for many years. Mostly based on population. Makes you wonder what the heck the state does with their five percent on sales tax. I guess I had to check up on those guys. Let's look into it. So one tactic here might be, this is one of my best decision-making processes, is can I procrastinate? And what are the costs of procrastination versus the benefits of procrastination? So if the council, if hypothetically, I'm not leading anyone, if the council said we're not going with certified tax rate, do we have to report to the county, the tax rate we will be going with?
You, you have to give them.
Oh, you have to give them a number. And then can the council, we know the council can change their mind and say, ah, you know what, we're gonna go with the certified rate. Right?
Correct.
Can the council change their mind and say, we're not going with that number, we're going with a smaller number?
Yes.
That's what we did last year, right?
Look, we did that two years.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
Sorry. You just can't go higher. And how much? This is more about scheduling hearing dates than anything else, the county's problem. So how much publicity goes out there?
Uh, they have to put it in the newspaper on a giant ad. I can't remember all the other.
But, but when is that, is that notification go out before the public hearing? The truth in taxation hearing or the hearing that adopts the budget? The truth in taxation hearing, so that hearing's in August. So in other words, I'm not trying to lead anybody anywhere, you see where I'm going, Nathan? We, the council could adopt a first reading of this budget that says we're going with a one six hundredth rate and tell the county that's what we're going with. But those public notices won't go out until two weeks or ten days or whatever before the truth in taxation, ten days before the truth in taxation hearing, not before the adoption of the budget. So the council could cut back from a large rate and avoid that publicity. And I mean, if you're avoiding truth and taxation, you, you also avoid the, am I being clear?
No.
All right, today is June sixth. Right? Today is June sixth.
Still high. More flexibility.
Today is June sixth. Hypothetically, let's say the council decides we're going with one six hundredth. That's first reading. There will also be a public hearing for the second reading of the budget that must be adopted by the end of June. And that's June twenty, whatever, Wednesday, a Wednesday. And if the council says we're going with one six hundredth, then we're headed towards truth in taxation. And the ten day notification before the August truth and taxation public hearing is gonna go forward. However, if the council says on June twenty, whatever, second, nineteenth, no, we're going with the certified tax rate, then there is no truth in taxation public hearing, there is no truth in taxation public notice. Then there is no truth in taxation public hearing, there is no truth in taxation public notice, there, there's none of that stuff. So the. I mean, unless people are watching us on YouTube, I hope you are. Thank you, thank you. They, 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 they really won't know. That the council went for one six hundred if the council backs off. To less than one six, if the council backs off to the certified rate.
Okay, I'm clear.
When does the county send out their estimated things, though? Isn't it based on what we give them tonight?
Estimated what?
I'll get a thing in the mail saying this is what my tax is gonna be. From the county.
Oh, right.
It comes out in August.
Or is that, I thought it comes out in July.
I thought it was July as well.
I'm pretty sure that's why they need your deadline.
That's a great question, so I'm, I'm loving your train of thought, but I'm not confident.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the county sends it out based on what we say tonight.
Well, and if it's my understanding, doesn't the budget start July first, but we're. Doing truth in taxation a month after it starts?
Yeah, go talk to the, go talk to the legislature about that. Right?
So truth in taxation is nothing more than sitting through a meeting where people express discomfort, but we're already set.
It's already done.
It's already done.
Yeah, I know.
You can't, well, I mean, you could reopen the budget.
We could, that's true.
I mean, the county reopens the budget every month. That's fine. Could modify the budget anywhere along the way throughout the year. And eventually you're gonna modify the budget to meet reality anyway. That's what the, that's what Justin and Amy were explaining to us. We're not only adopting next year's budget, we're trueing up last year's budget.
The motion that we have on the floor.
Yeah.
Which is to keep the rate.
Okay.
All right, keep which rate?
If you, if you can say, we have to have this two hundred twenty thousand dollars for something, then I can do it. Probably tax, ta- tax isn't charitable, it's nothing here. If, if people don't pay tax, they go to jail or get plebies. It's nothing light. It's just something we have to have in order to run a city. So if we're not spending wisely, I don't think it's wise of us to take it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm. I'm good with either approach. It's not my vote, but I'm good with either approach. One, you just hammer it every year. You know, unless it really is just one percent. One percent is like not worth the trouble. Four percent, I'm on the edge, right? Hyde Park did a point oh three percent increase on truth in taxation last year.
Yeah.
Because I'm reading between the lines. I haven't asked anyone in Hyde Park, but. They're just like, they've got a tax rate and they're gonna go with it. And they'll just deal with it.
Yeah.
So I think that it's fine. I think the city will be just fine. Avoid a bunch of headache and everything else. But someday the city council is gonna have to deal with, they're gonna have to reconcile that. You can't let inflation undermine the operation. And improvements to the city. I'm gonna start saying and improvements every time now.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I think it's, people well, well, staff well run, we go through a lot of different. Revenues and getting grants and stuff and. I just think, with the economy, I think. I don't think it's as well as people think. I mean, I went to Walmart last night and it wasn't holding up the same, but I think money's tied with people. So if we can be efficient with our funds, it just shows we're good stewards of it.
So one thing Justin said in our discussions along the way, which I don't think I heard you say tonight, I don't wanna. Put you up, pop you up if you don't believe it anymore, but one thing Justin said is there may be an argument for not doing. Higher than the certified tax rate while we focus on fees this year, because fees need to get straightened out. You still stand by that? Let's focus on fees this year, focus on property tax next year.
Yeah.
Instead of clobbering, I mean, we don't go through truth in taxation on fees, but still people might notice it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what I was alluding to, with there are other revenue streams and expenses that don't have to even touch taxes.
Yeah.
Like, that need taking.
Cost of services.
And fees and taxes can also, instead of being viewed as revenue, can be viewed as incentives. Right? So you can, for example, crank your water rate up and encourage people to stop using water when they shouldn't, right? There's, there's like.
Right. You can't crank the water rate up to build an indoor rec center.
You cannot do that. It has to stick with water.
Unless it's a swimming.
Swimming pool maybe. It doubles as a retention bar.
With grass.
Grass and trees. But I, I think that plus county, I think there's some other things that we need to do this year.
I, I think Rocky Mountain Power told me they've started a process as well. They think wild. But I think they're, they're starting that.
They have a public utility commission that they have to deal with, right?
How, how do we, uh, side and side note for my questions, but. Franchise taxes are decided in the agreements the year, like, or are they? Legislated?
Great question. I think they're legislated, because we've never talked about negotiating a franchise tax rate with these fiber folks.
Good question.
I would love. Find that out, so I'll start looking too, but if you hear anything.
And I, I, by the way, I get, I'm still getting calls from people that wanna put fiber in Nibley. You haven't. Heard an hour and a half discussion today with someone else. Good, they started talking to you instead of me, because.
I got a couple of calls.
How many fiber companies do we need in Nibley? Just one good one.
I had two people call me and say, I heard Google Fiber's coming, please say yes. I'm like, I haven't heard anything about.
We haven't talked about that in.
That would help economic development, though.
It would.
I haven't heard anything.
They have, they have discussed coming to Nibley with us. But it's on their side of the. Able to put forth a. Public utility agreement. Okay, so, uh. Norm, I'm gonna say that you made a motion to, uh. Call a vote or whatever it is, move the question. So instead of going through second, two thirds and all that baloney, actually, I think majority can stop debate. Is there anyone opposed to voting? And if you are, just say you are.
Right.
Your original motion, you regret it?
No, it's fine.
Vote.
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 Okay, saying no opposition, the motion before you is to. Uh, adopt for first reading the budget that we have been discussing with. Some minor changes, but the big question is that we would move forward at the certified tax rate. And I still want a different word for that. Is everyone clear on the motion? And it was, you have the motion and the second, okay? And there's no opposition to voting? If you're in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, please say nay. Thank you. Good discussion. We'll, uh, move forward. I should have had my. I'll update my bar charts, not for the next meeting, but the next year.
I like your point turn.
I have, I imported them all into the. My master budget, and I think I shared that with you.
Okay. We'll collaborate on the plan. All right, uh. The only thing I see left for council and staff reports. So Norm, let's start with you tonight.
Kay and I met with Al, I just wanna appreciate staff for all that they do. I know they do a lot behind the scenes and. Thanks for helping us and I know sometimes, um, staff gets. Criticized for their efforts, but I appreciate you guys sticking with the plan and what you guys are doing, so. That's all, that's all I have.
Can I just say ditto since I was at the meeting?
Yeah, thanks, Nathan.
Uh, I haven't asked in a while, so just to follow up, I know Tom's not here, but the half road at thirteen fifty?
Yeah, so we actually this week got the jurisdictional termination from the Corps.
Which is?
Is, yeah, it's jurisdictional, so now we have to. Figure out avoidance and mitigation.
Great.
So we have, uh, put out, uh. I gotta call it an RFP, we call the bid.
Yeah.
Uh, to design it, uh, but now that we know, um. That question, we might revisit who we allow to be the designer.
Does Meadowview count as wetlands mitigation?
I don't think so.
Okay, scares.
But, uh, you know, there's some, there are some pros and some cons to that, mostly cons, but. Now, we'll, we'll deal with it.
It'll delay it significantly.
Yeah. I don't know about significantly, but it, it'll, it's more hoops to jump through for sure.
Okay, um. The meeting on the nineteenth, remind me where it's gonna be. Okay.
It's not in conflict with, uh, quilters. I fixed two problems.
We, do you want to just have people chalk this room? Be a good attended budget meeting? I think that's it. Thanks.
Uh, I loved the bus tour. Parks bus tour was a lot of fun. It was a very good experience. Thanks, Chad. And everybody who helped arrange that. Um. We, I put in some, uh, beehive over at Morgan Farm and it's, it's thriving. Just thought you might wanna know. It's doing very well.
Sweet planer boxes, too.
Yeah, checked it out today. There's lots of, there's a queen bee in there, she's laying eggs. They're pollinating, doing their great, doing their thing. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I actually was gonna talk about the tour as well, and one of the things I, I had a question on is with Nibley Farms. We noticed on their open space, they haven't built out the landscape plan that they agreed to and. Phases one and two, but I mean, when, when do they need to actually do that?
Uh, I'll have to look into that. I know right now they're trying to figure out. Form waterfalls.
Right.
Converting them from retention to detention. Uh, so. They're kinda keyed in on that at the moment.
Okay.
So, but I'll, I'll, I'll have Tom follow up.
Was a great tour, Chad.
I already said ditto to. Norm said we were just involved in those meetings and huge appreciation to what staff. Does their efforts and their dedication and I just really appreciate them tremendously.
What? Levi?
Uh, we, we held the, at Park Day action transportation plan, we held a walk on it, a bike on it this past week. And, uh, could be, could be group around, it's, you know, different perspectives, looking at, looking at ours. You know, on, along the route, some of the issues or. People walking and biking and, and it was a good kind of public engagement activity, you know, different than a typical. Meeting or open house where we sit around the table and out, out looking at. Things kind of on the ground and, and so appreciate all of those that participated and. Know it beat into that, that plan, kind of right in the middle of, of that process. Um, also getting to the very tail end of the park. Recreation open space master plan. And then. That'll probably be on the agenda the first meeting in July. Or, if, if, if the schedule was right for the city council. We'll have a steering committee meeting, there's something to be involved with that, um, later this month to, to review the final draft and. And then, yeah, we'll hopefully bring it forward to the city council.
Thank you. Justin, go ahead.
Chad, are you gonna cover it in here today?
Yeah.
Um, I'll say something for Justin, but Kay asked me about the council will see a resolution going forward with Tri-H Farms. Next agenda.
Uh, I sent it to the attorney.
Okay, good. So it depends on how soon he comes back.
Yeah, and as soon as I hear from the attorney, I'll probably share it with Tri-H. And then, I don't know if there's a real hustle on it.
Right.
Um, you know, it might be worth doing when we see, uh, flat from.
From Al?
No, well, from the, what do we call it, Nibley Market?
Well, we've seen the concept.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't.
All right, yeah, I wouldn't bring it anytime soon, as soon as attorney's done, but I'll, I'll present to them and see if they have any issues.
Sorry, is Tri-H Farms at Al's?
The property that's. Like this on both, they're right in between both ends of Heritage Drive, but they're in Logan. And.
There's some questions about the master plan road through there. Some assurances, if you would like. Assurances. But, I mean, we talked about, I mean, ultimately it came down to, uh. The whole discussion about Heritage Drive through Nibley Marketplace and whether that can be built on the east side or west side of her. One of the concerns about, you know, we were told about, about it being where. East was that, that the property owner in the south was not happy with that, so we went and spoke with the property owner and he's like, well, given this and this and this. You know, I don't really care. So anyway, we'll explain all that, present all that. It should be ready.
Yep, good. Anything else? That's fine. That's fine. There's no rush.
Never any next.
I. The, the problem is, apparently the last time the city and Terry Hanson thought we had an agreement. Nothing ever materialized. And so now people think they remember things, whether it's us or whether it's Terry and. We said, we're gonna memorialize this, we're gonna get it down, we're gonna, we're gonna get this in the record. About what our intentions are with that road. Cheryl? Is this a sixteen and above job or? What's the position?
Seasonal workers.
Oh, yeah, sounds like a retirement job to me. Got a great retirement plan. Thank you. Amy? Good job on the budget.
Thank you very much, Amy, or for her work on the budget, and really all the staff, the department heads, and put a lot of effort into it, so.
Steve?
Uh, I'd also thank you guys for the, for participating, uh, on the, on, double feedback from staff as well. Really enjoy it, so hopefully we give them a couple times a year. Uh, now this playground is just about wrapped up. Uh, the concrete is in yesterday, we got some fire cans, hopefully next, that would be up to go. Part of Portland's been firing well up, water coming heavy, people watering, so. Three, two, Percy, and reservation's starting to happen here next month. Finalizing that all.
Chad, before you talk about heritage days, maybe I can just jump in on one thing. You can start moving up, I'll be quick. So we've talked about watermark. Disconnecting from Logan and annexing to Nibley. There's actually development on that, do you mind if I, you, or I, okay. So Nibley City actually contacted, sorry, Logan actually contacted Nibley and they said, you know, there's a lot easier way to do this, why don't we just do a boundary adjustment? And we said, well, mostly because both cities have to agree to that. And it seems like the city planner from Logan is like, well. And it seems like the city planner from Logan is like, well, let's just do that. And not only that, let's bring in these other three properties that are south of twenty-two hundred south and east of eighty-nine ninety-one that haven't talked about de-anexing and, or disconnecting and annexing. We'll just, we'll just bring them, we'll just do a boundary adjustment on the whole thing. They never said a word about a package deal. So that's actually quite encouraging. However, he also said, I haven't really talked to the council about this.
There's a punks line.
You talked to the mayor, but not the council. Interesting development.
That is an interesting development.
They're, they're a lot easier to talk to than they used to be, I think.
Wow. Along eighty-nine.
Yeah, so twenty-two hundred and eighty-nine, this part would all become Nibley. Just.
That area by Watermark.
Oh, the three other.
Further west, little pie shaped pieces.
I thought you meant like three other like.
Do the, do the homeowners, the partial owners have to agree to that?
No, they don't, but I don't want to bring them in against their will. In fact, we'll just leave them out if they don't want to. That's my opinion. We can drag them in. Because they don't have enough area or value to stop it. But Logan City said they'd talked to those people about
Oh, they will.
Moving the boundary, which I think is a good plan instead of us talking to them. Then maybe they'll say no, it's fine. We'll just leave them out. Did that cover it?
Yeah, no, that's good. So I, I think in the coming weeks and months, we'll see that. Um, for the consideration.
Okay, Chad, tell us, tell us about this thing called Heritage Days.
Right, I'll, I'll cover Heritage Days, but I'm going to save the best for last. Um, just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates. Um, Levi, I don't know if you signed your email, but we just got a report from Courtney Clint. We did the U C welding survey. She has an update on some questions that Levi has on transportation. She also processed some data for us that we can show with Hyrum regarding the welding survey that they did and two of the critical questions that they were very curious about was uh, indoor rec, they're always looking at like bits and some different things, but in terms of, and I've shared this with well, listening to Hyrum, in terms of indoor rec interest in well, well, Hyrum, they were somewhere between seventy and eight percent depending on what city you're looking at. Um, that, that percentage of interest increases if you look at families that have young children, obviously. Um, I, I think it would increase if you helped, uh, the communities understand that indoor rec isn't just for young families, that there's amenities for, for all people. That what's even more promising though, is the data that indicates that, um, overall, uh, all three cities are willing to, uh, pay a modest increase in property tax, which is, is promising and we're not surprised by that. We've asked that several times. Um, and, and seen that and obviously young families are wanting to pay a little bit more and stuff. So that's pretty promising. We shared that data with them. I haven't heard back from them in terms of their reaction. Uh, but we hope to talk to them about, um, cooperating in terms of collecting more data along the feasibility studies. So, another interesting thing, we had a meeting with NUU. They shared some numbers on their, their soccer participation. I was excited to hear that NUU City is actually a pretty major player in the valley in soccer. NUU has fourteen hundred players. North Logan has fourteen hundred. We have nine hundred players just in spring and we, we didn't start off and start till, so we, we've come a long way in terms of soccer and we're definitely a major player in that. Um, and then just a quick thing to include. Um, Levi and I attended, uh, one of the countywide feasibility study. It was supposed to be a technical I, I think everyone knows where we're at with the county rights. Seventy-five thousand is what they're willing to offer. The ask was to clear a thousand. So the technical committee was supposed to mean to outline the RFP. And in that meeting, there were a lot of public officials, which in some ways was exciting and promising because there were, um, three county council members, which we, we haven't seen at, at the but the, uh, the legislative, currently the public officials outnumbered the, the, um, recreation professionals. There were only three of us that worked in recreation and we didn't get anywhere on the feasibility study or so. Uh, Stephen, uh, Nelson, the Development Services, uh, Director for Cash Accounting will be working on that draft. He said we may have a draft that we could review and look at, you know, in terms of, of our staff in, in about a week. But we'll see how that happens. But the time is ticking. They have to present something to their county council to look at in terms of budgetary numbers in about five months from, from their last meeting. So they're also pursuing the possibility of a CIB grant to fund it, but I don't know that that works with their time in terms of the five months. So, anyway. So that's just a quick report on that. Some interesting comments there. Be happy to talk with you individually about that. Um, Heritage Day, so the good stuff. So Heritage Day is fifteenth through the twenty-second. Fifteenth is the fun run. And the I Trust Al will be there to run, but you don't have to, it's fine. The, uh, the main, main thing we want to draw your attention to is the community dinner. Uh, we'd really like to have you there. Uh, we cover dinner for you and your, your household, the, the folks within your family. Uh, that starts at six P M. If you'd like, ask, um, we've asked the, the food provider, um, to, uh, fire a house and make food available for us and the children's theater at five thirty. So if you wanted to eat a little bit earlier, so you have time to come visit the meeting, that, that's an option for you. I understand that several of you may work or have other commitments.
Are we helping serve dinner or are we just pretty faces?
You're pretty faces as you always are.
Is that all we are?
No, you're way more than. I, I can say this in terms of staff. I know you, you've expressed that you appreciate us. We really appreciate all of you and we, we understand you have a tough job and you have to make some hard calls and, and we all appreciate that. This, this is a great council to work with, a great mayor to work with. You're more than a pretty face, Larry.
The, the question is, are we working at the community dinner or just eating? Okay.
The budget work means we're staff. Does that help?
Doesn't help me at all. Good, thank you.
Make the call, dirty old man. Make the call and don't quit your upper job for a park seasonal job, please, can you do? I mean, you can work that, work in better, as long as you can do both.
I think that would be a conflict of interest.
It would, right?
I think I can umpire, but I don't think I can be a regular employee. I think I can be a contract employee.
Maybe a contract. We'll, we'll explore that. Um, I think that's really about it. Um, let me see. Children's theater obviously is something a lot of you like to uh, take a look at, uh, and that's immediately how we meet dinners. That's, that's community. One thing that I might mention that's a little bit different is we're offering a bike night out. Levi and one of our staff members, Ally, have been working on that. We're inviting the entire community to go to, is it four spots, Levi?
Yep.
Um, and, and we're gathering some input. We're enticing them to get out with some little activities at these spots. So if you'd like to participate in that, uh, that, that would be great. We appreciate your feedback in the spots. Um, in terms of volunteer support, I've kind of left that up to my staff and they, they've said confidently that we're set. I hope that's the case. We'll find out. Um, if you'd like to help though, we'd be happy to plug you in. Nathan likes to get on the team and saw. Aaron always likes to judge the categories. They're like sound equipment. So you let me, but you're not required. That's where we're at. Um, keep me posted on that. But one thing that I know we do need to square away is just while we're all here, I think it'd be wise to talk about parade. Um, make sure everything's clear on that, where, where all of you are meeting, what that looks like. The fact that you can't throw it when you you want to talk about, will we talk about the staff meeting? What the plan is, it's tractor and, um,
Wagon. And kid carrier. I know, never mind, you're going to disappoint me.
I'm wrangled into a family reunion. I can't come.
But if kids can.
No, that's a cop.
Kids or grandkids that want to ride on the wagon. Or drive the tractor. Whatever.
Girls can drive the tractor.
No, girls, nothing. I'm driving the tractor. Yeah, that's what we did last year, right?
There was a separate one for the coloring contest.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we had a pumpkin pump this wagon and, well, trailer and Norm pulled that with the tractor.
But just Aaron's kids rode the wagon.
But not, not as well.
We need more tractors.
But, and I apologize, I'm going to be gone this, um, also for Heritage, but Garrett's, there's a lot of far.
So Garrett, you're pulling the wagon with the coloring contest kits? That's what, what I'm saying?
Yeah. So.
Driving tractor, that's all.
Whatever you said.
Is that worth it?
Larry.
One question on that, Chad. I know they're doing the ribbon cutting and stuff for Five Flag Park that morning.
Yes, nine.
So we need to meet when? For the parade?
So the parade, uh,
Says ten.
Lineup, I believe it is at nine ninety-three.
So if we attend that, can we sprint back or are we going to be? Alright, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that you can't, you'll, you'll need, you can't take twelve west and they'll be showing down tenth as well. So you have to go down Elkhorn Ranch Road.
Yeah, I'd rather walk or.
Yeah, ride your bike.
Bike's always quicker.
Any other questions about the parade, about Heritage Days?
Do you need help stuffing candy bags?
Yes, Kendall Welker is doing that as well, but if you'd like to jump in on that. Um, the, the red shirts, I think you've all been issued a shirt. Garrett, do you have one? You have one from planning and zoning, right?
Red polo?
Red color, yeah.
It says Heritage Days on?
A collar, I just have a T-shirt. Just so you know. Okay.
I'm not sure. I'll have to look.
Okay, if you don't, please let me have a look.
Aaron has a T-shirt.
I just have to go back to the county feasibility study. Do you see someone taking cl- a clear leadership position? And is it the county? Is it, is it Steve?
Stephen.
Yeah, Stephen, so the, the crafts, tax, um, grants, if that's what we want to call it, uh, was dirt with the county and then, uh, they've assigned Stephen to lead out that project.
Okay.
Um,
Okay.
Yeah, so that's.
So he's going to be the guy to make sure an RFP gets written and if it's and collect bids and maybe ask for more money, maybe not, but it, the county is taking a leadership role on that.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah. I, I will say that one thing that was off air in the meeting that was interesting is David Suck said, um, once we have the RFP and we know what this thing's going to cost, uh, we may be going to.
That'll be when we have bids, not when we have an RFP, right?
Exactly. Once we have bids, uh, they may decide to go to other cities and say, hey, do you have some skin in the game? Do you want to participate? Are you willing to offer something? So that's something they talked about. They also talked about, uh, asking the school districts to support financial.
Okay.
And, and he said, you know, it may be a scenario where the cities opt out of that support and that they may in turn opt out of the whole process.
Who said that?
David Suck.
Oh.
Did you go to the meet, did you go to the meeting today?
Yes, I went to the meeting today.
Okay, so is your update from that meeting or the one prior accountable?
From, from the meeting today and stuff. Alright, thanks.
Thank you Chad. Chad, what else do we have, council? If not, and if there's no objection, we will adjourn. Thanks for your work tonight. We're adjourned. Good job. Crunch my chips too loud or.
Question, you know what? Heading south towards, starting.
Two grand.
You've got the Utah State like county facility. Yeah, what is that?
It's Wellsville Development?
Yeah, you've got that. Well, the city's putting that in?
No, it's a developer in Wells.
What's going in there?
Um, there are signs up for commercial leases. But I also need some residential. I have an action, but click on.
What, nine seven? Is there in?
Scroll down.
I, I make myself.